You let me know when you're ready, or I guess when we see them.
All right, my computer's been acting up a little bit, so if I.
For a minute.
To be on location.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, Tracy, let me know when you're ready for. So Nikki or Tracy, let us know when you're ready.
Okay, Tracy just ran into Cat's office real quick. We're, I'm just changing the view here.
Again, Nikki, just jumping right in there.
Welcome to the team, Nikki.
Thank you. Thank you.
She's looking at this going, what the hell is this? Zoom. What I do every morning from Fortuna.
So you think we're ready, Tracy? Yeah.
All righty, well, welcome to the September 14th Board Meeting of Humboldt County Board of Supervisors. In accordance with Executive Order N-08-21, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors meetings are being held virtually. You can participate via the Zoom call-in phone number, which is located on your screen and on the front of the agenda. And so at this time, Tracy, maybe we have a roll call, please.
Yes, Supervisor Bone.
N-4.
Supervisor Madrone.
Here.
Supervisor Bushnell.
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson.
Present.
And Supervisor Bass.
Here. Thank you. So now we'll move on to the flag salute, and I believe there is a flag ready, Tracy?
I hope so.
Perfect. So please follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for the flag, Tracy.
You're welcome.
All right, so in case, oh, and the fireworks, gotta have those fireworks. All right, so, and for people who might be with us the first time, just a reminder, when you want to call in and make comment, raise your hand by pressing star nine. When it's your turn to speak, I'll ask you to press star six, which will unmute you. When your number's called, you'll have three minutes to speak, and when you have 30 seconds left, you'll hear this sound.
Tracy, mute yourself.
Which, which means that you've got 30 seconds left to wrap up. And don't take it personally if you're muted afterwards, we try to be consistent for everybody. I usually try to guess when we might take a break, but I have no real idea today, so we'll see what happens. So with that, I think we'll go to our Acting CEO Hayes to see if there's any modifications to the agenda.
Good morning, Chair Bass, there are two modifications to the agenda this morning. Item D-12, to provide a COVID update, and item D-16 regarding a contract with Coa Hills have both been pulled from consent for discussion.
Thank you very much. Is there a member of the board who'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar with those items pulled?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Right, motion is second, we will go to public comment, we have a couple of hands up. So our first person has the last four digits of 2833, and please press star six to unmute yourself. Welcome. 2833, it's your turn to speak. Okay, Trace, are you there? All right, we're gonna go to the next one and come back, we'll go to 7108 on the consent calendar. If you were 7108, press star six to unmute.
Good morning. I wanted to comment on item three, continuation of local emergency to drought. Last month, when this came before the board, the task force in the discussion, it said, until directed otherwise, the drought task force plans to provide routine reports to the Board of Supervisors no less than once monthly. So I'm wondering if you directed them not to do that, or what's happening with the, these updated reports? Because the drought is continuing. The river is dropping more. Yeah, so I was looking forward to hearing what the task force has come up with at this point. So thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Our next speaker will go to the last four digits of 2784. So for 2784, press star six to unmute. Tracy, where'd they go? There, it's like you dropped off the screen.
Oh, I guess he changed his mind.
All right, so we're gonna go to 3249 on the consent calendar, if you are 3249, press star six to unmute, and you'll have three minutes. Okay, are you there? 3249, press star six to unmute. You haven't had this many problems before. Are we having problems unmuting them, or is it us?
I think it's, they may be a delay, Virginia, but they're being unmuted, so I'm not sure.
All right. Could be a longer day than I thought. All right, so we're gonna go back, again, if you are wanting to make comment, your hands are up. When we call your last four digits of your phone number, press star six to unmute. And also a reminder, if you're watching on TV and you're on the phone, turn the volume on your video off because there's a time delay, and so that might be causing confusion. All right, 3249, it looks like you're there, welcome.
Chairman.
Welcome.
An anonymous, this is Rick Pelron, by the way, 127 Metropolitan Heights Road in Fortuna.
Okay, Rich, you have three minutes.
Madam Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you hear us?
Madam Chairman, this is Rick Pelron, 127 Metropolitan Heights Road in Fortuna. An anonymous company out of Wyoming is looking to run coal trains into Humboldt Bay.
Sir, Rich, that, actually, that's another, there's, yeah, we're not at that item yet, this is on the consent calendar. So just hang on, and we will hit that, we will hit the public comment section shortly on regular non-agenda items. Right, so just, just hang in there, shouldn't be too much longer. All right, we're gonna go to 5300 is unmuted, and welcome.
Yes, so is this the appropriate time to talk about COVID since it's off the agenda now?
Actually, that will be coming up, we think around this afternoon, a little later this, well, later this morning, so no, there's, we'll have a separate discussion on that during, further down in the meeting.
Okay, so I'll just stay tuned and call back, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so 0326, we're gonna try you, 0326. Just press star six to unmute.
I also have a question, I have difficulty after the war and everything with hearing there, but the thing is, for the COVID results and everything, is that, can I comment on that right now, or is that gonna be later?
That's going to be later. But thank you.
Okay, I'll call back later.
All right, bye-bye. All right, we're gonna try the last one, and hopefully we'll get this this time, 2833. This is your last opportunity to speak on a consent calendar item. Welcome, you have three minutes. 2833, I hear you. All right, Tracy, are you getting anything?
No, I can't hear him either.
Okay. Very much apologize, but we will move back to the board now for the vote on this item or for the discussion, so. We're turning back to the board. Anyone have anything they wish to say about the remainder of the consent calendar, or are we ready to vote? Okay, we're ready to vote. And Tracy, thank you.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Bass is five zero.
Thank you very much. All right, so we will move on to the public comment on non-agenda items, we do have a 9:30 time set, so we'll hopefully be close on time. So this is the time for members of the public to comment on items not on the agenda. And so if you're interested in doing this, you should already have called in and raised your hand by pressing star nine, so. Okay, we do have a couple. So again, this is for items not on the agenda, and so we'll go to 2833. Press star six to unmute. Welcome.
Can you hear me this time?
Yeah.
Okay, you can all hear me?
Yes, and you have three minutes.
Okay, hi, good morning, my name's John Wilhelm, I lived on Miller Ranch Road in Garberville since the mid-eighties in the southeast corner of Humboldt County. I've been a taxpaying landowner since 1990, and in that time, I've never faced as dire a situation as I do now. As we all do, the situation we are facing isn't just affecting licensed cannabis farmers, but businesses countywide. The smoke damage crop of 2020 is being returned to us as unsalable. That means that all of the taxes, fees, licensure, processing, payroll, et cetera, associated with that crop are unrecoverable. The mega farms of the South are operating with impunity to the CEQA Act and other state mandates that we in Humboldt County are being held to. The mega farms, with their deep out-of-state funding, have business plans that allow for operating at a loss for several years to create market position. They're manipulating the market by flooding it with cheap, unregulated product, and there is no end in sight to the bottom of this market. There is no stopping this flood and its far-reaching impact it will have on our economy in Humboldt County. In addition to forcing many small farms into bankruptcy, the trickle-down effect on all the businesses in Humboldt County will create a crisis unseen here since Max Am's plunder of the timber industry in the late eighties. While the mega farms are in rates to the bottom, we, the small farmers of Humboldt County, are trying to build a sustainable model of farming that will provide jobs and security for our families and communities for years to come. We need your help, we need more time to complete our compliance agreements. I myself have paid out hundreds of thousands of dollars to engineers, geologists, hydrologists, biologists, forestry professionals, archaeological studies, surveys, culverts, road aprons, electrical upgrades, and the list goes on. With the 2020 crops lost and 2021's crop devalued, I've run out of money to complete my compliance agreement and to pay the Measure S taxes. And not just me, but everyone I know are in the same situation, or worse. We must work together as united fronts to survive this economic crisis. Do not allow the small farms of Humboldt County to fail. They are the only ones whose money will stay in the state's economy once this goes fifty-state legal. I've demonstrated in good faith that I'm working towards completion of my compliance agreement with the county. I'm asking for a payment plan for the Measure S monies due in October and an easy and affordable path to extend our compliance agreements with the county. Thank you for your time and consideration, good morning.
Thank you for calling in, John. So our next speaker will be 3249, press star six to unmute, and I think that is Rich. Press star six to unmute. All right, there you go, I think you're unmuted now, Rich, welcome, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. An anonymous company, well, let me back up and tell you who I am, I guess, to start with, so you're probably all familiar with me, but my name is Rick Pelron. I live at 127 Metropolitan Heights Road in Fortuna. I've lived here on the banks of the Eel River for over eighteen years. I love the Eel River, I love the community here. But an anonymous company out of Wyoming is looking to run coal trains into Humboldt Bay using the old North Coast rail route. Hope this is. This proposal would set us back 200 years, not to mention the further destruction of the salmon and other species on the Eel River. The rebuilding of the rail line is extremely problematic due to the steep terrain along the river, and the rail bed is cut into a shelf that is extremely steep and prone to slides. Further construction along that route will only exacerbate the problem. Dirt and debris has no place to go but in the river, and as we all know, the river cannot handle any further sedimentation. The coal itself is toxic and a pollutant. It seems weird that here we are, living in the 21st century, on the one hand, planning a world-class offshore wind project, while on the other hand, we're considering coal trains to run up and down our beautiful Eel River, one step forward and two steps back. Let's stop this project before it gets started. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Rick, and nice to hear from you again. Been a while, so. All right, we'll move on to, our next speaker is 0326, if you were 0326, press star six to unmute. Welcome.
Hi, this is Charles Wilson, on the, regarding the railroad on the, you know, going down the Eel River and all that kind of stuff. I, I never could see why government is gonna end up paying for a lot of this nonsense on the railroad there. You have an existing wonderful harbor up at Coos Bay with a wonderful existing railroad that works. And all they seem to wanna do is to try to resurrect this dumb railroad going down the Eel River, and essentially what it ends up is they, they wanna grab some sort of federal grants or monies somehow or another to further their ends, and just like in the past, for the last, what has it been, thirty years this? That's a bit, that's been going on, where they're trying to do it. First it was Union Pacific wanted to get rid of it, and then they sold it to their executive, then their executive milked it for his salaries and everything, then they sold it to this, got bankrupt and got out of that, and then they went to some sort of local agency, and they milked it for years and years and years, and then it was gonna cost billions of dollars, and, and, but then essentially what it ends up is that the taxpayers end up paying through the nose somehow in grants or funds that have to, that they figure out how to use, and so I think they should, if they ever try to do something like that, they should go through Coos Bay and with existing harbor and existing railroad there. Anyway, thank you.
Great, thank you, Charles. So now we go to, let's say, 7108. Press star six to unmute.
Good morning, it's Bonnie Blackberry again. I just didn't get an answer to the question about the drought task force, because it came before the board on August 10th, and that was a verbal report, and here in the discussion, it says that since May 25th, the drought task force has been out weekly to discuss local impact and response strategies, providing regular updates to the Board of Supervisors and the community via formal reports and social and conventional media. Until directed otherwise, the drought task force plans to provide routine.
The Chair.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that's, that was one that you spoke on earlier, that I believe is on the agenda?
It was on the consent.
Yeah, it was on consent, so Bonnie, you did get it.
Yeah, but it wasn't, it wasn't a report, it was just, we're gonna extend the class.
That's what I mean.
Okay, it's, it was, your point was taken, and we'll, we hear what you're saying, but you did speak on it. Rex, I mean, I hear someone else trying to talk. Nope, all right, so sorry about that, Bonnie, I was trying to, I understand, but it'd be like two times on that one, so 3018, press star six to unmute. 3018, press star six. You're going to move on, oh, here you go.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Hi there, my name is Tina Gordon, and I'm a homeowner, landowner, small business owner, license holder in cannabis cultivation, and I'm a taxpayer in Humboldt County. I'm calling you from Southern Humboldt, the southeast corner on Palo Verde, and I am calling today to seek protection from exploitive and irresponsible processors and distributors. My approved cultivation plan, as approved under Ordinance 1.0, allows me to process the harvest with my family in the facility on my property. And I'm calling in today to illustrate a couple of challenges that we're facing and, and that necessitate continued small batch on-farm proper, processing. You know, Humboldt County is synonymous with cannabis quality. Humboldt County defines, pretty much defines what modern cannabis is, and really created this industry. And for the small batch producers, we are the backbone of Humboldt County. What I have been told, when I started sending processing off of the farm, is that there really just wasn't the, there just weren't enough people to do this work, to do the processing. So I ended up sending this product down south to San Francisco. And at the distributor, there were multiple robberies, as well as a music video that was shot using. shot using my product as a prop. I have filed complaints with both the BCC and the Office of Cannabis in San Francisco, and nothing has happened despite multiple follow-ups and an attorney seeking resolution with this issue. So what I'm writing, what I'm calling about today really is just to ask for the, for the folks who were approved under ordinance one point oh to be allowed to process on-farm. That's all, that's my ask, and I thank you all for your time.
All right, thank you, Tina. All right, so 2784, press star six to unmute. All right, 2784. Welcome.
Hello. My name is James Bueller, and the reason why I'm calling is because of the farming situation in Humboldt County. I'm actually not from Humboldt County. I recently moved to Humboldt. I am a welder fabricator by trade. I've been aware of Humboldt County for well over twenty years. The county itself and even Eel River are famous, in my opinion, worldwide. Good cannabis comes from Humboldt. That's what everyone knows. I have two people from Israel right now staying at our place. They came here strictly because they're following a farmer in Humboldt. Two friends that came recently had me take them to a dispensary so they could get stickers that said Humboldt on them to bring them to their friends. Coming here and moving here, it has become a very, I've become very aware of the fact that farmers are suffering everywhere. It seems to me that Humboldt is shooting itself in the foot, that the reason why Humboldt's name is what it is is because of these farmers. I understand that, you know, for a long time, these legacy, these legacy farmers had to operate in a gray zone, and for the state to come in and allow them to make money and provide for their families in a legal way should have been a boon. And instead, what's happening is they're being taxed into oblivion. The legacy farms that have made Humboldt famous and are bringing tourism to the county and increasing revenue of other businesses, they're failing. They can't sell their product. Their product is being returned to them. With the one acre cap removal, big farms are shoving small farms out of the way. And it seems to me that as a business owner of a business that isn't in the cannabis industry, that Humboldt is tying its own hands and losing revenue. The more these farms continue to fail, the less tourism is going to happen in the county, the less product is going to move out of the county, and its reputation is going to become one of Humboldt used to be. And I doubt that that's what the county really wants. I think that in the interest of the county and small farmers, the county needs to look at some type of Measure S tax relief, some payment plans for that, as well as complacency issues. And it doesn't make sense to me that small farms are not allowed to process onsite. It seems to me that there are a lot of things in place that have been put into place without any real thought what the effect was going to be on the community or the farmers. I wish I had more time, and I was going to prepare something, but we're on a trip to make money for our home. So I really appreciate the time, and I hope you guys can do something for the farmers. Thank you.
And thank you. And we'll go to 5375. 5375, press star six to unmute.
Good morning. This is Lindsay Jones, Aloha Humboldt and Willow Creek. I am calling to reiterate that, that farmers are in a dire situation. From an economic standpoint, it just has been a real challenge because small independent producers just aren't able to compete at a commodity scale. And just logistically, being forced to work with distributors, farmers that are selling bulk product are having products returned, unsold, and then un-salable. And, you know, those are things that we don't have a crop loss, and most of us are unable to get insurance, so there's that. And then looking at, you know, other ways that artisans generally are able to sell their products, like doing tasting, doing farmers market, I'd like to have those revisited, please. Looking at how we can help farmers in the short term. I think that we could look at payment plans for Measure S funds. I think also we can look at putting into statute that we have ten percent of the funding for Measure S going into Trellis. But currently, we were not given any budget report or reports on, you know, where this funding is going. I'd like to request that due process is given. When, when funds are allocated, it would be wonderful to see these funds allocated through an RFP process and having that annual report to see where the funds are going. And coming back to the Measure S funding, I think that right now, a way to help out the small farmers would be to increase the Measure S funding to thirty percent and put it in statute, and then you would be able to give larger grants and fast-track the marketing representation. You know, currently, there's no marketing representation for my northern Humboldt farmers, and that feels frustrating to be taxed without representation. So I'd like those things to be looked at, please. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Gotta work on the time here. All right, so we have two more hands up, and we do have a nine-thirty time set, so these are the last of the public comments speakers. I will take it this time. And if we have to come back, we can. 0326, I believe you already commented, but I just wanted to ask first. Because your hand is up.
Hello, this is Charles Wilson. This is a separate comment.
You already had one comment during this time period. I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. All right, so then our last speaker will be 0116. If you're 0116, press star six to unmute. We do seem apparently to be having a delay, I'm understanding, today, so apologize for votes. You are 0116? There you are, welcome.
Hello.
Welcome, you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Ashley Teeter. I just wanted to talk about like the COVID mandates that the county is imposing on people, and just how different it is. I just went on vacation to
Ashley, Ashley, we do have the COVID item will be discussed at a later time.
Well, that's all right. I'm here to say my piece, right?
No, you have to say it during, when we have the agenda item is what we prefer, which will be later this afternoon or this morning. So I believe we're gonna try to do it around between, between all of our time sets. So I'm sorry, Mr. Teeter, but we will be back on that one. Okay, so we're gonna go back to the board, and we'll move on to our first time set item for the day, which comes to us from Aviation, and it's a presentation regarding passenger retention data and growing air service to Humboldt County. So at this time, welcome, Cody.
Thank you, Chair Bass and the Board of Supervisors. I'd like to welcome Jack Penning, who we have on the line here today from Volair Aviation. Just a brief background, Jack has been assisting the county for numerous years now with air service development efforts. And Jack and his team are very well experienced and big-time experts in the air service development world, have long-running relationships and large networks within the airline industry. And he has been crucial over the past five months since we've grown at an unprecedented rate as far as new service that we have here at ACV. And I wanted Jack to come this morning to present to the board and kind of give a little background on a recent study that we did with Jack and his team that will kind of explain the why we have seen all this growth and also look at where we go in the future from where we're at today. So with that, and with the Chair's permission, I will turn it over to Jack. And Jack, are you able to screen share?
Yes, I will. So I'll screen share, and thank you all for having me this morning. I'm going to share some, some information that we've put together just to illustrate what we're talking about. And the good thing, I guess, for everyone to, to know is that the next few minutes are going to be highly positive. So I have lots of good things to talk about, which isn't always the case, I know, in these meetings when you have some very difficult decisions that you're making consistently. So our story is one that is, is really one of the great success stories of the entire country and regional air service over the last two years. And so I want to walk through that, but I also want to point out that we have tremendous potential looking forward for additional service as well, even with all the new service that we've had added. So with that, I'm going to briefly walk through this, kind of the post-pandemic outlook, what we see in terms of airline network changes as we hopefully crest the peak of the pandemic as we go into the fall and into next year, how we're outpacing the region and the country, our true market, which is our passengers, not just who use our airport, but also passengers who fly out of other airports to and from our region, and how we can grow this market. You know, we hear a lot about tourism to the region. That has been a big driver of what we've been seeing, and we have some big opportunities to, to add additional service. So with that, the pandemic has hit virtually all communities, as you would expect, really hard in terms of air service. This map shows all of the routes that have been permanently canceled in the United States since March of 2020. There have been three hundred and eighty-five routes canceled. But what has happened is this has created a lot of opportunity because the airlines still own planes, they still have pilots, they still need to deploy their assets, and that's helped us. So while those routes have been canceled, there have been three hundred and twenty-four added, including a couple to ACV. We've had service added to Phoenix on American and service to Burbank on Avelo, both new airlines for our community. So we've got our, our service that we had before the pandemic on United to LA, to San Francisco and Denver running again. We have now two flights a day to Phoenix and between three and four flights a week to Burbank on big seven thirty-seven mainline aircraft on Avelo. So we've been able to convince airlines that they should add service in our market while removing it from others, mainly because we have a lot of opportunity because of the type of traveler. Travelers have changed. We aren't seeing business travel come back yet. The profile of the traveler is more the person who wants to be outdoors, who wants to be socially distant, who wants to go to new places, who can't travel internationally because of travel restrictions. We fit that perfectly with the coast, with the redwoods, with all there is to see and do in our part of the world. And so we have our highest capacity in terms of daily seats in three decades. This is essentially an all-time high since airline deregulation in nineteen seventy-eight with, with all of the service that we have now with non-stop service to five different cities and over five hundred seats supporting our market and arriving in our market every single day. We hit an all-time record for passengers in June that has continued into July and August. We don't have the audited numbers yet, which is why I'm showing you the June number. We're twenty-six percent higher than the previous all-time June high that we have ever had, and July and August were even higher than that. We're at the point where we have to really work with the carriers on where they can park at the terminal because there's not enough apron space. And if you remember when, when we worked on the strategic plan for the airport four years ago, actually, it's been almost five years ago now, we never could have imagined having that problem. And so this has been really, like I said, an incredible story of success in this market. You look at our capacity in light blue there for the rest of the year, we will be above our previous peaks throughout the rest of the year, and 2022 will be a record year for our airport. So this trend is going to continue. You look at the percentage of seats that we're filling, third highest in the entire West Coast. So we're filling more seats than all but two other markets in the West, eighteen points above the average. So we have more seats, we're filling more seats. The opportunity, you know, we saw before this, and we recruited things that we thought would strategically work, and that has bared itself out that those opportunities have been successful for the carriers that began service. So what we did too is we wanted to study that what the market looked like before the pandemic started so that we had a baseline for demand, so that we could understand how much more service we could really support when we get back to the point where our travel is one hundred percent recovered. And what we found is we're only scratching the surface of demand, even with the new service that we have, and that there are other opportunities that will be available. So you look at in 2019, we had enough demand to fill thirteen departures a day. Even with our new service, we're not near that number, we're about half that number. We only retain twenty-three percent of the passengers traveling to and from the immediate area. Twenty-four percent of our travelers drive to and from SFO, and thirty percent drive to and from Oakland. We generate over a thousand passengers a day each way in and out of the immediate area, and we only have about five hundred and fifty seats. So we just simply, even with the added service, do not have enough capacity. This is why it's so important for us to continue conversations with airlines and to continue recruiting service, because even with our added service, we still don't adequately serve our community, and we've got to work to change that. You look at the fares that people pay, our fares have come down pretty significantly. The average is two hundred and fifty dollars. Remember, a quarter of our travelers drive to San Francisco for service. When they do that, they pay three hundred and sixty-five dollars. They're paying a hundred and fifteen dollars more, even after they drive all the way to SFO for the ability to get on a plane. Simply because we run out of seats, we generate over two hundred thousand dollars a day in airline revenue, two hundred thousand dollars every day people spend on airline tickets to and from our area. You look at where our passengers are created, created primarily in Arcata and Eureka. Forty-two percent of our demand comes from those two cities. We also do pull, though, from places like Crescent City. We have a hundred and three passengers every day in each direction that Crescent City zip code generates. So we are an airport for more than just Humboldt County. It's an airport that's owned, operated by Humboldt County, but that's important to an area that's much larger than Humboldt County because of the regional isolation from air service. I think that's important to keep in mind. So we think about, you know, how can we better serve the whole region? There are opportunities to grow the market, and the tails you see here are a bit of a hint of where we're going. But if you look at our top twenty markets in terms of passengers, we do not have service in four of the, really, the top ten markets. San Diego is our largest market, one hundred and sixty-seven passengers a day in each direction, and all of those are either driving to another airport to fly to San Diego, or they're having to connect at either Phoenix or San Francisco or LA. So there's, you know, a very large untapped market to San Diego. In fact, in our top two markets, San Diego and Las Vegas, we only retain six percent of the passengers at ACV that are going to and from those two cities. So ninety-four percent of those passengers are driving to another airport to fly to San Diego or to Las Vegas. So we know those markets can support service. We're seeing in the LA Basin market, we have service to both LAX and Burbank now, that we're retaining much, much better to LA than we are in other markets. The other large market where we don't have service is Seattle, Seattle Tacoma, the Everett area, twenty-eight passengers a day each way, and we retain less than fifteen percent of those passengers. So these are real targets for service, and we're working with carriers like Avelo on, on markets like Las Vegas. Avelo flies from Santa Rosa to Las Vegas, so that's a potential opportunity. No commitment there or anything, but something that we're recruiting. And then the obvious carrier to Seattle is Alaska Airlines because that's their large Airlines, because that's their large hub, and we believe that makes a lot of sense. So you look at our future targets, Dallas Fort Worth comes up because American, when they add service to a new market, they come in from Phoenix. That's what happened in San Luis Obispo, it happened in Santa Barbara, it happened in Santa Rosa. If the Phoenix service is successful, typically they'll add service to their hub at Dallas Fort Worth, not just to cater to people going to Dallas, but to connect to the eastern part of the US in a single stop. And so that's a natural next for American since Phoenix has been so successful to this point. As I mentioned, San Diego, Las Vegas, very large markets. And then, of course, we have no service to the Pacific Northwest. So Seattle makes the most sense because it's the largest market we have to the Northwest in terms of the number of available passengers, and also it connects out to the rest of the Pacific Northwest. But we have to mitigate airline risk. So we've got to be competitive. There are 360 airports in our size or that are of our size in this country who are all trying to secure the same type of service. Airplanes are a movable asset. That airplane can be deployed out of any hub across the country. So we're not just competing with airports like Redding or airports like Santa Rosa in California. We're competing with Champaign, Illinois, and we're competing with Portland, Maine for this asset. So what virtually all airports do and what we've done for our service is fee waivers and cost offsets to reduce the amount of cost an airline has to invest in order to operate at the airport and to open a new station. We always love to market. We have, of course, Fly Humboldt that spends a lot of money marketing our service to ensure that our planes are full. That has been an absolute key. But what we have used in cases like Los Angeles and in Denver is minimum revenue guarantees where we're guaranteeing a base revenue target. And if we are above that target, we're not paying a dime. But if we're below, we're paying for the loss for a certain amount of time, usually two years, and with a maximum, you know, exposure on our guarantee. So as we think about Seattle, that is what we've been working on, is building the minimum revenue guarantee fund. And of course, we typically have Fly Humboldt as the agency that signs on to the MRG so that the airport doesn't have to directly sign on that agreement. But that is where we're going with Seattle. So I just want to end with kind of our upcoming efforts. We are, and we have been, and Fly Humboldt has been, and our airport director has been reestablishing community connections, building local support, especially for upcoming service to Seattle. And we have been meeting frequently with carriers. We've met with, well, we've had nearly a dozen in-person meetings over the summer. We will have more in all likelihood in the fall with our target carriers because that communication has been key. So with that, I will wrap up and I am happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Jack, and good to see you again.
Nice to see you.
All right. Does any board members have a question for Jack or Cody at this moment? Supervisor Madron?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, thanks, Jack, for the presentation. And I think that Cody and staff and Fly Humboldt, everybody's done an incredible job and very much appreciate all. Just wanted to point out that it's not all roses for everybody. I get a lot of complaints in McKinneyville about the increased traffic and in particular the increased noise. You know, if we had, you know, an ideal world, we'd try to attract those planes that are quieter, right? Because that's a major impact on the community of McKinneyville. And in my almost three years on the board, I didn't get any complaints about any of that stuff. Of course, during COVID, there was a lot less flights. And I think that's part of what happened. You know, the flights went down, and then all of a sudden now we have so much more activity. And with the larger flights like Avelo, they're very loud, frankly, you know, much louder than a lot of the other smaller planes were. And so I just want you to know that I am getting complaints about that. So again, in an ideal world, we try to attract quieter airplanes, if that's at all possible within the realm of what we do. But I just wanted to share that. I think it's great. The community has so many more options. Clearly, the demand is there for that. Let's just try and bring in quieter ones if we can. I doubt that's the case. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Madron. Actually, I thought the one, the first landing of Avelo was pretty quiet, but then again, I don't live underneath it. Any other supervisors have a question at this point in time? Letting you off easy. All right. Well, let's go then to the public. Oops, wait, we're going to go back. Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation and that it's great that our airports have expanded and offering more opportunities to our community.
Thank you. All right, we will go to public comment and we have one hand up. It's 0326. If that is you, press star six to unmute and you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, this is Charles Wilson. Back in 1972, the airport, we used to call it McKinneyville Airport. Anyway, the thing is, the annual enplacements was about 102,000. And I flew in on the Hughes Banana, you know, the Alpena airplane. Then they F, then in the 1980s and 90s, it dropped down, I think down to about 60,000, 65,000 annual. And then when the FAA wanted to push this idea of relocating Central Avenue and extending the runway, it finally got up to 102,000 again. And the FAA was projecting it was going to skyrocket into the sky, 150,000. But anyway, that's, I don't know what it is now, but these numbers, it's nice to hear that somebody is interested in the airport, make it worthwhile. I do notice that the, when you get more airplanes, you get more noise. Down in LAX, we did, we had all kinds of lawsuits. Up here, you have essentially tried to confiscate the right to not have noise in your house and everything like that. I noticed, I commented on the land use compatibility plan and the airport, oh, anyway, the airport management plan, I forget what they call it there, it's been so long. But anyway, what I noticed on that, there was not a single item in the airport land use compatibility plan indicating that the airport was going to make an effort to be compatible with McKinneyville. All these things, all the concessions were made by the McKinneyville community. And so I think it's a completely one sided and it's not an appropriate name. I made my 40 pages of comments. I comment page by page. I knew the FAA regulations and all that kind of stuff. They still haven't corrected a lot of the things there. Housley read my reports. She said she got halfway through it. And but anyway, I, it's, what I get the impression is that when they do these reports, they, like the one report there is drawn by DG, let's see, drawn by DG, designed by GG, reviewed by DG, approved by DG. And essentially, there's very, very little oversight. Anyway, thank you for listening. Bye bye.
Thank you. Thanks, Charles. And no other hands up. So we'll go back to the board. Any other comments? It is nice to have some good, you know, something that is kind of positive and upbeat these days. I appreciate that. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I just, I think, thanks for the report. And I think partly what we're seeing, part of that demand is Mr. Penning was mentioning, is really demand for people to want to be here. And we're just going to see that more and more, I think. And we're seeing it reflected in our real estate. We're seeing it reflected in all kinds of other things. But if we're getting more traffic and the appreciation of people, of what the space and place is, I just kind of want, I've seen in other airports, a fairly well advertised offsets program, carbon offset program. And I would, it would seem like we've had the Arcaded Community Forest, I've seen the offsets from that program sold in the, and offered in San Diego Airport. And I was kind of wondering, maybe we should be starting to think about those potential offset opportunities in our own airport to help focus the visitor on some of the things that we're trying to maintain and preserve in our community. So I just want to put that out there.
Thank you. Any other supervisors?
Well.
Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, I, yeah, thanks for the report. And Cody, I really appreciate the job you're doing, especially answering the Sunday phone calls when I call. It was kind of funny listening to Jack when he talks about all the people flying up here because of the redwoods and the coast. And I remember the controversy about naming the airport and actually putting California name. We were the only ones that have California. Redwoods is the number one sorted visitors attraction in, even more than Disneyland. So our airport comes up first and foremost when they go through that sort. So I still appreciate the name because I think it's a great advertising tool, or at least it sorts out and pops up first on the computers or however that works. The other thing is, is the number of flights coming in back in our heyday, I believe, not necessarily passengers, but we used to get more flights in because we were running the Bombardiers and, and the twin turboprops and everything else. Now we're bringing in bigger aircraft to run more efficiently. So I think that has a lot to do, I don't know what the number of flights, I don't know if the flight count is down from the 80s when we were, you know, when we had all those twins coming in and all the, I mean, we had turbo twins coming out of Seattle and Portland. So, but they were only 35, 38 passenger, they were smaller planes. So I think maybe we're getting more efficient as we move on. So I think as we move forward and people are wanting to come up here more to enjoy the redwoods and the coast here in California, Humboldt County Airport, I think the idea is, is working out really well, the master plan. And I, I think the implementation that Cody's brought forward with the help of Jack and his crew has been, has been great. So still more efficient than having all those people drive cars, I'd imagine. So.
Thank you. Yeah, that reminds me, I think back in the, a long time ago, in the flights to Sacramento, we're actually on the planes that basically the pilot was also the flight attendant, you know, obviously they were really small and they're, I'm going, oh, I like it so much better now. All right. So don't have any other board members commenting? Cody or Jack, anything else you'd like to say?
Just say, I just want to echo that comment. If you go back to the late 90s, we had 12 departures a day to San Francisco. We had four departures a day to Sacramento. We had multiple departures to both Redding and to Portland. So we actually had almost three times as many flights in the late 90s, but we had fewer available seats. And so what we will see over time is the, what we call upgauging of aircraft, larger aircraft, which will mean fewer operations, which should help at least focus noise to fewer times a day. At least that would be our goal. And as more efficient planes are developed, the noise levels will go down. Now that's a much longer timeframe than, than getting larger planes. But it's a great point that we actually have many, many fewer operations than we had even 20 years ago.
Well, with that, we will let you go about your day, unless Cody, did you have more to say?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Bass. For Supervisor Madron on the noise concept, I think Jack was touching on it there lightly. But for the aircraft that we're getting today, you know, in 2021, they have made drastic improvements over the last 20 and 30 years on reducing the noise. And that will certainly continue as technology, even in the aviation world like we see with our cars, is being driven more and more towards the electrical side. And I think we'll see over the next 10 to 15 years, again, a drastic reduction in those noise levels as airlines continue to transition and get that more modern technology that's being developed today. Supervisor Wilson, on the carbon offsetting, actually a part of our microgrid projects here at the ACV Airport and the educational piece, we will be showing those statistics as far as our carbon offset in the energy generation from the solar farm that'll be hosted here at ACV within the terminal. So incoming passengers that see that solar farm and the battery array down there, maybe out their window on final approach, when they're waiting for their bags at baggage claim, we'll have that educational opportunity for the positive impacts that that development will have for not just our airport, but McKinneyville and the greater Humboldt area. So we do have some, some positive aspects and things that we're developing on both of those fronts too.
All right. Thank you, Cody. All right. I don't see any other hands up. So we will let you guys go about your day. And thanks, Jack, and thanks, Cody.
Thank you.
Looking forward to hearing more. All right. So we have a little bit of time before our 10:30 time set. So it's been suggested that we go to the Coa Hills item, D16, that had been pulled earlier from consent.
Do we have, why would we do Coa Hills before, before the other one, which is number 12? Why would we jump?
Well, because Coa Hills would probably take less time than the COVID update.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, it's hard to say, but we did have several people trying to speak on the COVID item earlier when it wasn't time yet. So that's what Acting CAO Hayes suggests. So.
Okay, just wondering. Thanks.
Yeah. Yes. All right, Coa Hills. Here we are. Who's the staff report on the Coa Hills item? It's Human Resources. Who would be providing that report today, Ms. Hayes?
Hi, thank you, Chair Bass. This is a Human Resources item. Assistant Human Resources Director Kelly Barnes is on the Zoom meeting today and can speak to this item in further detail.
All right. Thank you. And welcome, Kelly.
Good morning.
Good morning. Do we have a picture of you or are we just on phone?
No, I'm sorry. I'm having internet connection issues. So I'm trying to keep my connection positive by keeping my video off at this time. I apologize. Yes.
So if you can provide a staff report on this item so that it was pulled by Supervisor Bushnell, is that correct? No, who pulled Coa Hills? Alicia?
Supervisor Bone asked for this item to be pulled.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Bone. All right. So Kelly, can you please provide us the staff report on this?
I'm not sure what, what questions may be coming forward in regards to the Coa Hills item. I know that the item is moving forward in support of continuing to provide some significant position control and firewall and internal control measures by having Coa Hills support some of the actions that move forward. We've not necessarily had internal controls as part of our human resources and payroll components. And that has been of significance and concern for many years, like 20 plus years. There's been multiple meetings and audits that have taken place. I think the most recent meeting was between the Honorable Auditor Controller Paz Dominguez, Coa Hills Director Lee, as well as there have been conversations with the Acting Interim County Administrative Officer Alicia Hayes and the Interim Assistant CAO and CFO, Ms. Cheryl Dillingham, essentially, you know, outlining some of these concerns and the support that is needed by Coa Hills in order to create these firewalls and these internal controls as we manage forward with various functions as far as like merit system increases and things that we don't currently have firewalls in place for.
All right. And I do see the Auditor Controller on the screen, and I see some supervisors with questions. Welcome.
Good morning to the best and supervisors. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to provide support to my colleagues in the HR department as I did have the opportunity to meet with Coa Hills. I did have the opportunity to meet with Coha Hills and NGO and representatives from the CAO's office. Director Lee is not available today to answer any questions, but I did come prepared with some information that I'd like to share with you if you'll allow me to share my screen. I think it would be better understood with visuals. May I?
Please share.
Thank you. So as you know, I've been working with Director Lee on this transition of the payroll function to the Auditor Controller's office. And part of that work requires an assessment, a process review of all of the transactions related to an employee's lifecycle to determine is it better placed in Human Resources or in the Auditor Controller's office. As you can see here, if I select just Human Resources tasks, there's a lot of tasks that will impact payroll. When we were working on this document together with the Human Resource Director, she asked to please include Coha Hills because, one, they are experts in finance enterprise. They have a unique experience because some of the people who own Coha Hills broke away from Central Square when it was owned by Sun Guard and they were transitioning to a new owner. So they have the experience within the system. They are also payroll experts. And so they're able to help with other aspects of an employee's pay compensation cycle, like retirement, leaves of absence, disability, workers comp. When we met together, this is the visual representation of how tasks are to be distributed to Coha Hills. When departments submit PPAS to personnel, they can be for a variety of different requests for each employee. What HR has to do at that point is separate it out by who can perform these tasks, who has capacity. And up until now, Coha Hills has been providing assistance to HR because of the lack of staffing. I know that Director Lee is very much interested in sustainability. And so the primary intention of continuing the contract with Coha Hills is so that they can provide training to the current staff in Human Resources so that eventually Human Resources can perform all these tasks with its own staff and not rely on Coha Hills. I am also, I also have this document here to provide you a snapshot of how the financial software is split up now. Prior to the payroll transition, steps one through six were being performed by Human Resources with limited staff, limited training, and limited instructional documents. Now, the AC department takes over at step three, but all of these tasks here, step one and step two, are all of these tasks. Even though there's only three squares in that visual, it represents a lot of work that has to be done every week in order to make payroll run accurately. I am here to support Director Lee's request to extend the contract with Coha Hills. I see a tremendous value in their expertise and their ability to train and their ability to understand the unique structure of this county's payroll function. I'm also happy to answer any questions you may have related to that meeting I attended with Coha Hills and Director Lee. Thank you.
Thank you. And Supervisor Bone, since you called this one, you pulled this one, I thought I'd go to you to see what questions you might have.
Well, I was, I just, when I had a couple of people call, just, it's a quarter of a million dollars out of, out of the general fund budget. And I still go back two and a half years ago, we had four people doing payroll. And now we've got six and consultants and somebody else is going to work out of HR. And it seemed like they, and they seem to have worked with all our departments, I mean seamlessly. And, and we've lost that. It feels like we've lost this. Maybe it's just my perception. But the amount of phone calls and things that I got before we sent it back over DC and people that were concerned about it. And I, it doesn't feel like it was as seamless as it was supposed to be because none of the people that are, that rely on payroll or employees or their department heads were contacted about this and making it work. So I'm, I'm just, we can, we can just keep throwing money at everything and say that we have to do this because of the chance of theft and, and, you know, the firewalls and all the things that have to get up. I'm just wanting to know, what has changed so much? I mean, that's what people are asking me. Why is, why are we doing something every few weeks on this? And I've been pretty quiet the last couple of months on this. But it's, you know, when I, the last report and how much money we're spending with NGO and how many people we have over there and we've got, I'm just, it's just confusing to me. And maybe it's just because I'm a simple person. I'm not as smart as the people running these departments. But it's answers that people are asking for. And I don't think it's off base to ask these things because we're asking for a quarter of a million dollars out of two, you know, and I heard Coha Hills is already working for us, but they're offshoot of another organization. I didn't, I don't know anything about them. But I just, I'm just trying to get the answers of why this is, if it's necessary, so be it. Because I think the most important thing we do is, is reward and pay our, pay our employees every two weeks as efficiently as possible. But, I mean, I don't think that goes without limiting how we get there. So, so I got people that asked and I didn't have any answers. And so I thought I'd let the really smart people tell me why they're doing it.
Auditor Paz Dominguez?
Thank you Chair Bass. I can address some of the questions that I heard. Coha Hills has been working with this county for many years, even prior to the payroll function going over to Human Resources three years ago. They've provided great services to this county with regard to the setup of finance enterprise. And I believe the item in front of you today is to extend that agreement that already exists, but may have expired very recently. Also, I think it's very important for you to understand that the tasks Coha Hills is performing are not the payroll function. That has, for the past week, it's been in my department. And we were able to successfully issue payroll last week. This is going to help Human Resources be able to catch up on its backlog. And with regard to the cost, I share with you that you're breaking even at this point because of the vacancies in Human Resources Department. You are not paying any employees, but you can pay Coha Hills to cover in the meantime while those positions are being recruited. Also, there are some positions that are being held, kind of locked down because the current incumbent manager is on leave, as well as another employee who is on leave. And while those positions are held by leave, we cannot recruit for them. We can only hire extra help. And that can sometimes be less of an incentive for someone who has these qualifications to apply. So I think it's a good interim solution that would help meet the immediate needs of this organization. And it would benefit all county departments to get all of this backlog caught up. Thank you.
Right. And thank you for that. I see Supervisor Bushnell, hand is up.
Thank you. Kelly, can I ask you, Coha Hills, is it a continuation of a current contract or is it a new duty that they'll do?
That is correct. It is a request continuing a contract that we've already been working under with them.
For the same, and the contract is for the same job duty, job description?
We're requesting some of the same support, yes. And I believe that there may be some other, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What would be the additional request from them that isn't currently covered under the contract that's, that's already existing?
So it's expanding upon some of the support that they're providing for the position control items that need to move forward in our finance enterprise system. Because as the Auditor Controller stated, we currently do not have that support within HR with the leaves that were, that are currently in place. So essentially, we don't have staff or team members to move forward a lot of these functions. And, you know, we've been partnering with Coha Hills for many years now, as, you know, as we work within finance enterprise, you know, within our agency. And so it's just requesting for their continued support. And part of that is the training component also, in order to provide training to our HR staff so that we can bring them up to speed on being able to perform some of these functions moving forward with absences and even as, as some of those absences return back to the department.
Who was doing the positions that you're requesting Coha Hills to do in the future? Who was doing that in the past?
So most of that work was being conducted by the payroll supervisor and manager, the management of the position control items.
And either Alicia or Kelly, can you guys tell me what the contract's price tag was previous? And has it increased from their previous duties to the current new contract? The dollar amount?
I believe it is an increase in the dollar amount. I don't have that information right in front of me, but I believe that we are requesting some additional funds in order to continue to support the function moving forward.
The payroll function or control function?
And I guess from my opinion that those go hand in hand. Sorry. Position control directly impacts the payroll function overall. So.
I saw, are you done Supervisor Bushnell? I saw Supervisor Bone had his hand up, but I also believe.
Well, I would like, I would like to get an answer to my question of the previous price tag to the new one. And I think Alicia might have it.
Yeah, I, there was an amendment that was done in July that increased the contract to 185,000. I'll also add to that, that this is an amount not to exceed of 221,000. So we will be charged by an hourly rate for the hours for which they support the county. So we may not necessarily hit that benchmark.
Thank you, Alicia. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Rex, I think you had yours. And then Supervisor.
Yeah, I was gonna, I just wanted to ask Kelly, is, is anybody, is anybody left from the payroll team from a couple of years ago? Any of the payroll team or the payroll managers? Are they, are they all gone now? Is this part of the problem? Is we just don't have any institutional knowledge?
I would say yes, that is part of the problem. And we do have vacancies. And we, and we do have, as already indicated, we do have some team members that are currently on leaves, approved leaves. And so we do not have those expertise or that knowledge moving forward some of these functions.
Supervisor Madrone?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody in HR and the Auditor Controller's office, as well as all the departments for working hard to try and make this transition successful and moving us all forward into a more streamlined and efficient manner. Thank you for getting payroll out every two weeks. It's not easy. And I very much appreciate the hard work of all of our staff in helping make this happen. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to go to the public and then I'll be back to the board. That's, is there anyone from the public interested in speaking on this item? There's no hands up. So we'll go back to the board. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I'm prepared to make the motion that we move forward with staff recommendation on this item.
Second. And I have a question, maybe this is for Alicia, because this is a four fifths vote. If it were for some reason not able to get that four, would the contract just be held to the original? What's the, what is the, I just want to clearly stated what the concerns could be if it did not pass with the four fifths?
There's two components to this staff report. One is to approve the contract and one is to approve the funding required to pay for the contract. So it is the funding component of that that requires the four fifths vote. So if you approve to the contract but not the funding, then you would essentially leave it without a mechanism to, to pay for the contract to move forward.
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to get that information out there. So any other comments from board members? Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you for the chair. Alicia, do you, can we, or do you anticipate more items coming, financial funding requesting to help with this transition? Or do you think this will be sufficient to make this a successful transition?
At this point in time.
Yeah, either one of you, sorry.
At this point in time, your board has approved a significant allocation of staffing to the Auditor Controller's office to assume the payroll functions. As discussed, there have been some staffing challenges in Human Resources that is taking place. And I would say that I think this contract is imperative to maintaining the health of Human Resources and to ensuring that our staff are properly supported. Difficult to say without my crystal ball whether or not additional staffing or resource allocation requests will be forthcoming. As you're probably aware, you know, the, both of these offices have received significant allocations in recent time.
And because it's up to 221,000, then it can sit there and not be utilized if we don't need the support. Is that correct? And, and I'm sorry, I should have looked. But what, what is the length of the contract?
It's a one-year contract. And that is correct. That if the funds are not expended, then they would fall back to the general fund.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I did see a hand up in public comment, but we already closed that portion and came back to the board. So sorry about that. We have a motion. Any further discussion? All right. Looks like we're ready to vote. Tracy?
Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
I think it's important our people get paid. So yes, but I don't know how many more people we're going to add to all these departments.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
All right. So thank you. All right. So we have one other item, but we're not going to get that one done in 10 minutes before. We're not going to, we'll keep looking forward to bring the COVID item out. We have an 11 o'clock time set. Do you have any suggestion, Alicia? Or we could take a 10 minute break because it might be one of the few we have, of an item that you think we could do in 10 minutes?
Sure. The staff are present for the 10:30 time set. So I would ask Economic Development Director Scott Adair if he feels it would be acceptable to hop on this, the next item 10 minutes early. Otherwise, I would propose a brief break.
We would be prepared for that if that's the will of the board.
I would ask County Council to comment on that, please.
Yeah. And Supervisor Bushnell has a question as well.
Chair, I would recommend that the board just take a brief break. If we have something timed set, we shouldn't begin before the time.
Okay.
That was my comment. I've gotten complaints in the past that people have missed the time sets because we started early.
I don't remember almost, I don't remember ever starting a time set early. So that's why I was surprised by the suggestion. So, all right, we'll come back at 10:30 and we'll begin at that time. Going to apologize ahead of time because this is an unusual item. So we'll do the best we can. So at this time, we'll move on to our 10:30 time set. I mean, yeah, you have the right time here, 10:30. And it comes to us from the County Administrative Office as regarding the newly formed Public Finance Authority for the Samoa Peninsula Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. So at this time, we will adjourn as the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and reconvene with the three appointed supervisors and, and the public members. So that means, I believe, Supervisors Bushnell and Madrone get to, not, they don't have to be part of this, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Get an additional break. So Supervisor Bone is myself. And Supervisor Wilson, is that correct?
That is correct, Chair.
All right. So Supervisor Madrone, you and Supervisor. All right, so Supervisor Madron, you and Supervisor Bushnell are now, we were, we've adjourned as the Board of Supervisors, but we will be back to you in just a little bit. So at this time, I would like to ask Scott to kind of lead us through how we expect this to go. It seems simple enough, but there's a long list of items there, so I want to make sure we get everything that you need, even though I do believe this is kind of a routine item.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Yes, it's a routine item. I expect it to go fairly quickly. My name is Scott Adair. I'm your Director of Economic Development. With me on the call today, we also have Tanner Etherington, who is a member of the Economic Development Team and Staff. This meeting is a meeting of the Public Finance Authority, excuse me, for the Samoa Peninsula Finance District. This comes from Agenda Item 21-505 from June 19th of 2021, wherein your board adopted a resolution, or I should say, the Board of Supervisors adopted a resolution of intention to form the Samoa Peninsula Infrastructure Financing District. Important to note that in accordance with Executive Order N 08-21, this meeting is being held virtually. A link to a live stream of this meeting of the Public Finance Authority is available online at humboldt.gov.org, and call-in instructions for public comment are included in the agenda packet for today's Board of Supervisors meeting. Today's PFA or Public Finance Authority meeting is intended to address several procedural housekeeping items related to the formation of the PFA. I anticipate will move very quickly. The Board of Supervisors.
I, I just realized, I did not do the roll call or have anyone do the roll call. Do we want to start with that too, or do you want to kick it off after we get? Just let me know when, when you want me to try to run through the, these pieces.
I'm going right into that, Supervisor. Happy to do that for you. The Board of Supervisors has already adjourned as the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors and is now open as the Public Financing Authority for the Samoa Peninsula Finance District. Seeing as we do not have a chair or a vice chair yet for the PFA, I will go ahead and initiate roll call, starting with PFA member Bass.
Here.
PFA member Bone.
Yep.
PFA member Wilson.
Present.
PFA member Tim Callison.
Here.
And PFA member Chris Drop called in in advance and has an excused absence for today. So we do have a quorum. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items for the Public Finance Authority?
I do not see any.
Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda item. I'm happy to walk the Public Finance Authority through this item once we have a chair. Happy to turn it over to the chair for chairing the rest of the meeting. The first item on the agenda is to elect a chair and a vice chair for the Public Financing Authority. As the PFA has not yet established any bylaws, we will accept chair and vice chair nominations from the floor. Are there any nominations for chair and vice chair?
Would it be uncredited? I was going to say Chris Drop. No, I won't do that to him, but. You miss a meeting, that's what happens. Does anyone want to be chair or vice chair? There's a question.
I'll do whatever anyone wants.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with whatever. Tim, do you have a preference of, you want to throw yourself in his chair, or?
Um, I lost words.
Oh, yeah, you don't have to. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, actually, I believe that at this point, I just, I would like to just stay a member.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, so Supervisor Bone, do you have any thing you want to share on this? Or is it maybe just the default? Maybe we just stick with our chair and vice chair from the Board of Supervisors that we have, but.
I can, well, I worry a little bit about that with Mike and the conflict with the coastal and how busy he is with that. And I mean, next year, he's going to be chair, he's going to, of this board too, so he's going to have a lot on his plate, so. I mean, I'll do whatever you want.
I'll, I'll speak to the conflict issue. I mean, it's not a conflict from a state statute perspective. I'm hoping that this particular board doesn't take a huge ton of time, but either way, vice chair is quite frankly the easiest of things that you can be appointed. It's almost easier than, well, certainly than almost any other thing, so I'm happy to do it in, in that way. I'm fine. Either way, it's, it's all, but there, there are no conflict, there's no, there's no incompatible office. It does through state legislation, and so I'm, I'm able to wear those two hats.
Virginia, if I may chime in, I don't mind helping in a sense. I'm just concerned of, you know, my job does take me out of the town and travel quite a bit. So that was kind of the basis of my point. So if, if I can help out as a vice chair, I would, I would probably be willing to do that.
So Supervisor Bone is chair and Mr. Callison is vice chair, or is any?
And I, I'll put Virginia, your, your chair, continuous chair. I'll say Tim Callison, vice chair. We'll move on, if that's okay with Supervisor Bone.
Whatever you'd like, Mike.
Is it always going to be that good?
Always is.
Okay, I have heard a nomination for Supervisor Virginia Bass as chair for the Public Finance Authority and PFA member Tim Callison as vice chair. Before we move on to a motion to accept nominations, any other discussion? Any public comment? All right, will the PFA move in second to accept these nominations, please? From a
Second.
This is a different process.
Moved by Bone and seconded by Wilson. Chair Bass, you are now Chair Bass again, this time of the Public Financing Authority for the Samoa Peninsula Financing District. The next item on our agenda, Chair Bass, is to adopt a resolution for the Public Finance Authority, which directs preparation of the Infrastructure Financing Plan, adopts the Conflict of Interest Code.
Oops, one moment. Looks like County Council Billingsley had his hand up.
Sorry, Chair, just a procedural, I don't believe you voted on the motion.
We didn't.
No.
Thank you, Jefferson.
And don't forget.
What?
I was saying, don't forget to vote on the recall while we're at it, so.
Since we're virtual, we'll go by roll call on that. PFA member Bass.
Yes.
PFA member Bone.
Yes.
PFA member Wilson.
Affirmative.
PFA member Tim Callison.
Yes.
Motion passes, and Jefferson, thank you for catching that oversight. Now, Chair Bass, you are chair of the Public Financing Authority, and moving on to the next agenda item is to adopt a resolution which directs the preparation of the Infrastructure Financing Plan, adopting the Conflict of Interest Code, and making other various appointments as defined in the attached resolution.
Thank you, and I guess my first, my question would be, this, I believe, is routine. I, because there's a lot to look at, but my understanding is, in moving forward, this is what we need to, to continue moving forward, is that?
Correct. The law behind EFIDS or Enhanced Infrastructure Financing Districts are very heavily prescribed by legislation, and County Council had very close look at and participation in the preparation of this resolution.
All right, thank you. So are there any questions at this point before I, on this item, before I go to public comment? It says here. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this item? I'm seeing none, so we'll go back to the board.
I'll make it to adopt a resolution.
Is there a second?
I got.
All right, no other discussion happening. Can we, Scott, can you do the roll call vote, please?
Happy to. Chair Bass?
Yes.
Vice Chair? Callison?
Yes.
PFA member Bone?
Yep.
PFA member Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. So we are now adjourning as the Public Finance Authority for the Samoa Peninsula Enhanced Infrastructure.
Chair, there was one last agendized item, which is to hear the timeline and schedule of upcoming public hearing dates. That should only take two or three minutes.
That's fine. My, my, the print is really small, my eyes are going, all right, this is like 12 items here, but yes, please.
That should only take three minutes, and then after that, we will adjourn. I'm going to turn it over to Economic Development Administrative Analyst Tanner Etherington to review the upcoming meetings and the topics of those public hearings.
Welcome, Tanner.
Unmute.
Uh-oh, he's unmuted. Uh-oh.
I can read lips.
Well, it says you're unmuted, but we're not hearing anything.
Now you're muted, now you're unmuted.
Does the host have to unmute Tanner?
Tracy? I, I don't have to unmute him, he's a panelist.
That's fine. I can, I can go ahead and go through it. The schedule has been previously shared and attached with previous agenda items for the board, full boards review, when the resolution of intention to form the Samoa Peninsula Efid was adopted by the Board of Supervisors. And it does look like Tanner's back. Tanner, are you able to?
Can you, can you guys hear me now?
We have your audio, yeah. Go ahead and run Tanner.
How you doing? Sorry about that. Good morning, board members, attendees, and thank you for having me this morning. As Scott mentioned, I will be giving you an updated timeline for the Efid formation process. So at this time, we will begin drafting the Infrastructure Financing Plan for the Samoa Peninsula Enhanced Infrastructure District as directed by the PFA. Staff will then distribute the IFP to the appropriate entities and make it available for public inspection prior to the initial public meeting of the PFA. As of now, the initial public meeting is scheduled for October 19th, at which time staff will present the proposed Efid and draft IFP. This meeting will be followed by three public hearings, during which time the PFA will take public comment on the IFP and the proposed Efid. No earlier than 30 days following the initial public meeting, staff may begin publishing and mailing notices for the first public hearing and must do so for four successive weeks. This will allow for the first public hearing to be held no earlier than the 14th of December. We also feel it is important to mention that this will require an amendment to the resolution of intention to form the Samoa Peninsula Efid, so that the date of the first public hearing reflects this updated timeline. Staff will bring this item to the County Board of Supervisors at a later date. Now, during the first public hearing, the PFA should hear all written oral comments, but take no action. Each following public hearing must be held at least 30 days after the prior hearing. So at this time, staff anticipates hearing number two to be held in early February 2022. I would shine the PFA, she'll consider any additional written and oral comments and take action to modify or reject the IFP. The third and final public hearing, expected to be held in March of 2022, the PFA will conduct protest proceedings, and if no majority protest is found, the PFA may adopt the IFP and form the Efid. Thank you, and that concludes my staff update.
Thank you, Tanner, and Chair Bass, that concludes the agenda for today's Public Finance Authority for the Samoa Peninsula Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District.
All right, so there's no more public comment, this is like, it's a whole different item here. All right, so are we ready to adjourn? Is what you're telling me right now?
Yes.
Okay, cool. All right, so we now adjourn the Efid, whatever we're going to call it for the initials, and we're going to reconvene all of our members to the Board of Supervisors. That was an interesting item. So as CAO Hayes, I, I know that we were going back and forth, we still have the COVID one, but we only have 14 minutes. Do we, how, I mean, is it?
We have item I 1 on the agenda to review the public educational and governmental access channel fees. So we can move into that. I think that that's going to be a quick item and probably the only thing left that we can accomplish before the 11 a.m. time set.
All right, so then we will move on to that item, which was the first departmental item, I believe. So I'd like to turn this over to Acting CAO Hayes for the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Bass. This item comes before your board to allow for the reauthorization of fees on state franchise cable and video service providers who provide support for public educational and governmental access channels. The proposed fees are not new, nor will they be changing through this proposed action. However, as franchise agreements expire and renew, this will allow for the same fees to be collected. And this, just for your full knowledge, this impacts the WAVE and the Suddenlink services provided to the community. And with that, I conclude the staff report and pass it off to your board.
Thank you, Alicia. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, CAO Hayes, when these come up, and I know Karen used to handle them, but when these contracts come up and everything else, is there a way we can have better cooperation from Suddenlink and the, and the sometimes perceived failure to provide the services that people are paying for? I mean, we, I, I get enough complaints about TV that it's, it's amazing. The service, the cutoff, the prices, and I know we can't affect prices, but, and I know it's, 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 it's an open market, so you can have anything any way you want to do it, but with that being said, can we put a little more teeth in it? I know that we've transferred our local control went away, what, five, six, seven, eight years ago, and they went to the statewide control, and now they don't give a damn about us up here, but for some people, it's the only option they have. So I, I don't know if we can do anything, but, or just take all the, you know.
Because it is a private agency, it is difficult to manage their business operations. And I, I would defer to Karen Clower, who has had extensive relations in this field and can speak to what prior conversations may have taken place.
Thanks, Acting CAO Hayes. In answer to Supervisor Bone's question, unfortunately, because it is a state franchise, we do not have the local control. As far as the agencies, it's actually what is considered a landline agency. They actually run cables, whereas other providers are wireless. We do utilize the Busky Group and Access Humboldt to help resolve some of the issues that we're having with the local cable providers.
All right, thanks.
And thank you, Supervisor Bone. I mean, that's, I get a lot of comments on, on that. Lack of service.
Comments or complaints?
They're usually complaint with comments. Yeah, I don't have many people calling and being too excited about it. Anyone else, these supervisors? I wanted to make sure with County Council Billingsley, I didn't ask him to introduce the ordinance, although it looked pretty explained in the item. I just wanted to make sure it was covered correctly.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the full ordinance title was in the agenda item, so it doesn't need to be read. And I will just say, I believe there's a working group of several counties that is trying to collaborate regarding Suddenlink and IT service, and I'll share that information with CAO Hayes and Ms. Clower.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll go out for public comment. This is an item you were waiting to comment on. Now's the time. Press star nine. All right, no one appears to want to comment on this item, so we'll go back to the board. We do have a staff recommendation. There's a motion to that extent.
I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay. All right. Motion is second. Any further conversation by any of the supervisors? See any hands up? All right, well, Tracy? All right. Tracy, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Chair Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madrone?
Yes.
That item passes 5-0.
All right. Thank you. So the way I'm seeing it, we have eight minutes before the next item. Is that correct? All right. So wow, two breaks in, in one meeting. So be back at 11. All right. It's 11 o'clock. Supervisor Bushnell's in her office. Sorry, Chair moved. Supervisor Bone, are you with us? All right. And Supervisor Madrone? There you are. All right. So here we are. So the next item comes to us from the CIO's office, and it's a hearing related to the redistricting effort in Humboldt County. So at this time, I open the public hearing, and I'd like to turn this over. I'll turn it to CIO Hayes first, and then go from there.
Thank you, Chair Bass. This item comes before your board today to provide an update on the redistricting efforts and to make some minor modifications to the rules and procedures of the Redistricting Advisory Committee. So with that, I'll pass it off to Neftali Miller Rubio, Senior Analyst in the County Administrative Office, to provide the update.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Neftali.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Bass and members of the board. My name is Neftali Miller Rubio, and I am the Senior Administrative Analyst with the County Administrative Office. Today is first, is the first of three public hearings to be held in open session before your board this year related to redistricting. This hearing serves four main functions. First, as an update to your board and the public regarding the Redistricting Advisory Commission, known as the RAC, and the outreach workshops that are happening now. As Acting CIO Hayes mentioned, a request from the RAC to reduce the quorum from four members down to three, and a snapshot of preliminary numbers from the 2020 federal census shared by our consultants at Redistricting Partners. Last, which is also an opportunity for the public to share comment or testimony relating to their communities of interest or other items presented today. So per your board's direction, the RAC met weekly during the month of August for training on legal framework, redistricting principles, and roles as commissioners. They are currently on break from official meetings, participating in pairs in our outreach workshops that span the month of September, and these are hosted by the California Center for Rural Policy. The next public workshop is actually held tomorrow via Zoom on Wednesday, September 15th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There will be additional meetings following two Sundays to reach individuals outside of the work week on the 19th and the 26th, all from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And Don Arledge, I believe, is joining us today to answer any questions you may have about the workshops or about our outreach work in general. So before moving on to the presentation, I'll add some detail about the RAC's request for an amended resolution to reduce the quorum from four members specifically. As a group, commissioners have attended each session so far, but do have some concerns about potential attendance issues posed by the COVID-19 pandemic, specifically if someone should get sick. Should more than one commissioner be unable to attend a meeting during the coming months, the commission would be unable to conduct business during what is already a constricted timeframe. Some things for your board to consider. The quorum was set by your board in July due to the essential nature of the commission's work, and appointments were made with the understanding of this commitment. All RAC meetings have and will continue to be held via Zoom, allowing for safe participation for commissioners, staff, and the public. And there are only three meeting dates that would be affected by this change, September 29th, October 13th, and October 27th. Following that, we will be meeting here during your board meetings to review the RAC recommended plans and to hear public comments. A letter from the RAC Chair Brian Mitchell was included in this, on the topic in your agenda packet, as well as the draft resolution for your review. And now, as I mentioned, our consultants with Redistricting Partners are here to share a brief set of slides depicting preliminary census data and what it could signal for Humboldt County. These totals will likely see some shifts as numbers are finalized at the state level, and data is expected from the state on or near September 23rd, though our consultants may have an update for us. With that, I thank you for your time, and turn the floor over to Chris from Redistricting Partners to share some detail on local numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, who are we?
And they were on, they may have some connective challenges.
There's a, I don't recognize the name Kimmy. Is that, is that person part of it? Because I do see them on.
I think that Chris Chaffee just needs to be promoted to a panelist.
I'm, I'm really, I'm really sorry. I think I clicked on the wrong, wrong link this morning to get on. So I apologize. Let me share my screen. And we can go through just a preliminary analysis as Neftali went through from the legacy data set. So hopefully you can see this presentation. It just starts with the overview of your current lines. And I think what we've done is basically convert your current lines to the 2020 Tiger Lines, the geog, the geographic set that the Census Bureau uses to show population. And so we've taken your current lines and then applied the current legacy data from the Census Bureau to look at both your underlying population and then your ethnic breakdown by citizen voting age population. And you can see that currently, you, your pop, your population deviations are not too far off. The smallest district is District Four, that is currently underpopulated by 3.2%. And your largest district is District Three, that is overpopulated by 3.5% based on the ideal population for the county. Now, just a refresher, the courts and the courts have basically allowed local agencies, cities, counties, water districts, school districts, to have a total deviation between the smallest district and the largest district of 10%. So right now, your current lines meet that 10% balancing test for equal population. But remember, with the Fair Maps Act, we also want to have that public engagement to hear from the public and hear from the, from you about the communities that may have been split in the last round of redistricting in 2010, and what communities should be kept together. But with this just preliminary analysis based on the legacy file, your populations are actually pretty well balanced throughout the county. There is, of course, a caveat. It seems like there's always a caveat in this round of redistricting. These, the legacy data set from the Census Bureau is not our final population number. We have to wait for the statewide database to reallocate the prisoner population that are in state prisons back to their, their former residency. So we expect that there will be some population shifts, but not to a great extent in Humboldt County. So we think this will be very close, but not exactly your population breakdowns for the county. So then I just wanted to go into the citizen voting age population. So this data set was developed by the Census Bureau for the Department of Justice and to, to basically check for compliance with Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, which was, was passed and serves to basically protect minority voting rights throughout the country. And the only this, this data set is, is often used when one majority group can reach 50% plus in a district. And as you can see from this highlighted box at the bottom, there are no districts currently in Humboldt County that have anywhere close to 50% of a minority group. The highest percentage is the Latino population in District Three at 10.7. So you're not, you don't need to worry about drawing a 50-plus majority minority seat to comply with the Section 2 analysis, and that's not going to change with the prisoner reallocation data set. So then I didn't know if you guys wanted to go through. And I think this would be a good opportunity if, if you have questions, we could go through districts one by one if you were interested, or we could just open it up for general questions.
All right, well. About, do you have more slides to show us, or were those the two?
Well, the rest of the slides are just the, the district, like, overviews.
Okay.
So we can go through each of those if you'd like.
Maybe quickly. I'm not seeing other heads. I can't tell. So.
So this is District One, the coastal district that comes down from Eureka. It's very close to the ideal population. It's only underpopu, populated by 116 people. So it'd be very easy to get this to zero if we wanted to. You can also see that, again, there's not a large minority population in District One. District Two with Fortuna and then the much more rural southeastern corner of the district. This is, again, it is slightly underpopulated by 697 people or 2.6%. Like a lot of other counties in Northern California, the, the rural areas have not kept, kept up with the growth in more urban centers. So we're seeing this type of deviations in most of the rural districts and most of the northern counties. And then you can see, there is a, there isn't another, again, another large diverse population in District Two with the highest percentage being 6%, 6% Latino. District Three, which takes in part of Eureka, Arcata, and then comes down and has this rural area. This one is overpopulated. This is the largest overpopulation of your five districts. It's overpopulated by 966 based on the ideal population or 3.5%. Again, this is following a lot of the trend lines in Northern California where we've seen the cities really grow, grow faster than the rural areas. So that is, is true here in, in District Three. And again, the largest ethnic population is 10% Latino. District Four, I was surprised a little bit that this district is underpopulated by 882 people because it incorporates a lot of Eureka. This could also be just an area that is completely built out, and there isn't a lot of future development, or there wasn't a lot of development over the decade. So that's why it didn't keep pace with the growth of District Three.
There's been a lot of, there's been quite a bit of denouement. So next, next time it'll be fuller.
I mean, yeah, and it's just an interesting thing, right? Like, where were people on April 1st of last year? So the last, the last district, District Five, again, this one is overpopulated by 727 people or 2.7%. And it is the north, the northern district along the coast and into Willow Creek. So that's the, the end of the presentation, and I don't know if there's, I'll, I'll open it up for questions, and I'm going to go back to the.
And actually, can you stop the screen sharing? Because it's really hard to see everybody.
Sure.
Well, at this point, so we've got Chris on. Any questions for, for Chris based on what you've seen? All right. Well, don't go away. Supervisor Bone, I mean, Madrone.
Oh, I did. All right. Me?
Yeah, well, I, it was my mistake. It was actually Supervisor Madrone first and then Bone, I think, but all right, Madrone, we'll go with that. That's the first hand I, I saw. I'm sorry.
He needs to unmute though.
Yeah.
Thanks, Rex. Thanks, Chris. It's always interesting looking at these things. I'm just curious where probable projections of growth play into all this. For instance, Samoa is going to gain a lot of houses real soon. You know, over the next 10 years, they could easily make up a significant number of that population. Arcata as well is probably going to be adding. I mean, if the Polytech comes through, we're talking about adding a few, several thousand people, right, to that area. McInnesville continues to add housing tracts. These are all things that are projected in the future, and I know we probably can't really consider that because it's a point in time. This is where we're at right now. How do we adjust all this? And then there's always the question of how many people live in an incorporated area within a district. You know, when you think about communities of interest, one of those might be people living in incorporated towns versus people in unincorporated areas. And the fifth district basically has only 250 people out of its 26,000 that are in the city, right? And everybody else is in the county. So just some interesting things, and I'm not suggesting to do anything one way or the other. Just a couple of questions.
Yeah, I think your, your first point to growth, I think it, it comes up a lot, and I think it's an important element to add kind of to, beyond the five criteria that we talk about in, in the Fair Maps Act, because it's something that you can use that 10% deviation that the courts have provided local jurisdictions to basically underpopulate areas where you expect growth to occur, and overpopulate areas where you think it's built out, or there's not an expectation of growth. I think there is a caveat, though, because sometimes when you, you expect for growth based on development, you, you forget that it's also, there's also immigration into the county, into different areas that are already built out. And there's also births, births and deaths, right, and those balancing acts. So it's, it's really hard also, I, I think as you already pointed out, to really build it in, in any specific manner because of the 10-year projection. But you can still use that deviation, and, and I would say, you know, 7, 8% total deviation is a really, is a fair number to use. And, and then use that with growth in mind, and also to keep communities of interest together. Because I think to me, the most important thing is if you could, if your total deviation is, let's say, 8%, but it lets you make sure that you don't split any cities other than Eureka, because you're going to have to, it's too big, but any other cities in the, in the county, or you can not split any communities of interest that, that come forward. that, that come forward, I think it makes sense to use that total deviation for that purpose. But if you're using it just to, you know, slice and dice throughout the county, then it's not as, I don't think it's as fair. But again, this is, I think, really a board decision. And we'll look to you for guidance if you want us to look at growth as a factor when we're drawing district lines. And also I think that discussion of unincorporated or rural is a really important community of interest that we can also look at. But we, again, would love to have some more guidance from the board or from the public on where those lines are. If it's just as easy as town that, that's incorporated versus unincorporated county, that's an easy line. We have that in our system that we can use as a, a division or, you know, a way to basically map that unincorporated incorporated line.
Just to follow up real quick, if I might, through the chair.
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, so I imagine you guys probably have precinct numbers on a map. And that would certainly be really helpful, I would think, for this board. You know, as we start considering input we might offer or not offer, precinct numbers are really helpful because then you can kind of look at it and go, well, if we shifted there, there's 800 votes, but we pick up 800 over here or whatever, you know, that kind of thing. Because I imagine that's what your committee and you are all going to be drilling down into pretty deeply.
We're, we're really balancing just for, for population. So we're not looking at ele, election data at this point. So we can get precinct data, but usually we just use population numbers to balance because of the, because the population, it's a, a population balance, not an elected or a registered voter balance.
Yeah, well, that's what I meant. I'm sorry, using the word precinct. What I meant was numbers of people where they live.
Yeah.
So you can kind of see how you might adjust things based on population. So that's really what I meant. Thank you.
Okay.
Supervisor Bone?
No, I was, and I'm just wondering when I, when I see all the, the deviations on what we do, especially someplace like Humboldt County, others, whether native, we have the Asian, we have the, the Latino, African American. I was wondering if the Native Americans are spun out in any way? Are they just an other when it comes to our census?
We can.
They are, they are 7.2% of our population in Humboldt.
We can run a Native American data set as well. And we'll, I can do that and provide it to NEF Tali to, to distribute to the board so that we can add that data set to this, this atlas, as we call it, that so you can see the Native American populations by district.
I think they're owed that. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone. Supervisor Wilson, and then I do want to give Donna opportunity to weigh in also from CCRP, but I'll go to Supervisor Wilson first.
Yeah, I just, I just want to associate myself with the comment from Supervisor Bone related to the demographic data and, and the need to have our native population in there.
Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. Dawn, did you want to add into the conversation since we have you here?
Thank you. I think mainly to highlight different ways the public can, can get involved other than providing testimony today during this hearing is we have the three outreach meetings mentioned. You can find all the information on the county's redistricting web link. You can fill out a community of interest form through the website that tells about your community of interest, what bonds you together. Public feedback and input's really helpful. So we have the outreach meetings, we have the community of interest form online. And then we'll be making PDF maps available at all the local libraries for people that might want to just draw on a paper map. And then there's District R, which is an online tool that you can submit input that way. So we just love to encourage public input and testimony to help the RAC and the Board of Supervisors understand where the communities of interest are in the county. And happy to answer any other questions about outreach. And thanks to redistricting partners for everything they're doing to get all these tools and materials available to, to us.
Thank you, Dawn. Okay, so any supervisors have any questions of either Chris or Dawn at this time? Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, it'd be great if, if the, there's recalculation related to the request of the additional demographic data, if we could get that at some point.
Yeah, so I can provide an update. So the statewide database should be done by September 20th with the reallocation and the final data set. So we're anticipating basically updating this data that we, that I just presented to you this morning and getting that back to you within a week of that release. So we should have that to you by September 27th in the same, same format. And we'll also have the Native American information on there as well.
Thank you, Chris. Well, we will go to public comment. We have one hand up right now. If you're interested in commenting on this item, please do press star nine so that we know you were there. So we do have one at this time. That'd be 0326. 0326, welcome, and you have three minutes.
Hi, this is, this is Charles Wilson. I've been following this, all this ethnicity stuff and bean counter stuff and everything since 1960 and before. 64, we had our nonsense. 65, we had our nonsense. But I see these inconsistent ethnic classifications. The state would differ from the feds and everything. I guess this is using Fed's census data. But the thing is, even back 50 years ago, the definition for a Hispanic was a Spanish person. I pointed it out to the EEOC and they didn't do anything for 10 years, I don't think. But anyway, the thing is, the Portuguese were not included. They use different terminology now and everything like that, but they still include Spanish speaking to supersede any people that might be Portuguese. I noticed that the fellow who was using the term Latino, I thought they were using Hispanic now, but, you know, these terms hop, switch around according to the latest political wind. But I do notice, you know, they used to have in the census to self-identify. Well, if you self-identify, if you don't self-identify, I guess the census worker made a visual determination based on what they thought you were. And he put down that on the census records. Also, if you put down mixture. So anyway, I don't know where these two self-identify and mixtures are included in the percentages. Thank you. Bye.
All right, thank you, Charles. All right, so there are no other hands up, so we'll go back to the board. And we have a couple of actions to take regarding the changing of the quorum and updating the rules and procedures of the Redistricting Advisory Commission. Is that correct, NEF Tali?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
Sure, I'm ready to make a motion that we adopt the draft resolution, amending and updating the rules and procedures of the Redistricting Advisory Commission.
All right, is there a second? Supervisor Bushnell? All second. Okay, thank you. Any other additional conversation from the board? I don't see any. Tracy, would you please do a roll call though?
Yes. Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
In four.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Pass is five zero. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. And at this point, we will close the public hearing. And we'll move on to our next item. Covid, Alicia, Covid is the Covid update. This has been quite an interesting timing of things today. So, yes, we do have a supervisor who had asked to have the update pulled. So Supervisor Wilson, did you want to say anything before we turn it over to staff?
Not too much, other than been receiving still this, you know, a lot of communication from the public around this issue. So, and it seems like some trends are changing a bit. And so I want to, I, I think it's important that we have a, just a, a short discussion about that and then let the public have what they want to say instead. And yeah, we'll get back to it.
All right, thank you. Well, I know we have Sophia on here, we have Dr. Hoffman, Michelle, who'd like to, you know, provide some general information so the public who hasn't read our agenda has an idea of what was, what was listed.
Good morning, Chair and your board. Dr. Hoffman will be joining in just a moment and will be able to, to give a report out. It's just been a moment for him to come on. Thank you.
And I want to apologize to public health staff. You know, I was hoping that we'd get to this earlier, but it just didn't happen that way. So how, so how it goes sometimes.
Sometimes that's caused a challenge in that arena, unfortunately. All right, so we're waiting for Dr. Hoffman.
So how's public health doing, Sophia? Give us a public health update.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, our staff are working really hard to support schools right now. I'm sure that's something Dr. Hoffman can elaborate a little bit more on. But, you know, we're transitioning to supporting schools, focusing on shelters, congregate settings, and really putting our resources there. So the team's working really hard, but it's, you know, there's, but the surge of cases changing to that model, you know, in real time is, is what we're doing. Let's see, we're continuing to do well on the vaccination front and providing clinics several days a week. We had clinics over the weekend that did really well and had people show up too. And we're working on community-based clinics at schools for this fall. So that's something else that we're working on pretty actively to make sure that we're reaching younger folks as well.
All right. We're still looking for Dr. Hoffman?
Patient, Dr. Hoffman.
I know.
He's logging on right now. He's in the waiting room, it sounds like.
We just need to bring him in.
Yeah, thanks for your patience.
Well. Wish you could have given me a better idea of timing. Welcome, Dr. Hoffman.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us. Yeah, so you received the update. I'm not going to go through the whole thing. I'll just hit some of the highlights. I think that overall, even since late last week when that report was written, we're, we're seeing continued trends in the right direction locally. The case numbers are going down as of the end of last week. And the hospitalizations, especially, we're seeing a pretty sharp decline in hospitalizations over the weekend. This is something that is also being seen regionally in a couple of our partner counties like Del Norte. So we're hopeful that this might be kind of the other end, the other side of this current surge of cases. But of course, we need to remain vigilant and watch what's happening very closely as we have seen instances in the past where we see a little dip and then spike in cases again. Certainly, I know the hospitals are, are very happy to have this break, though. It's been a really, really difficult time for them over the course of the last few months, given the caseloads. So any, any reprieve in this? And if you read through the, the report, you'll see just sort of the, the really intense nature of the care that, that is required for a COVID-19 patient, especially one who's in the ICU. I think, you know, other aspects of the update are the monoclonal antibody clinic, which has been running now for a couple of weeks at St. Joseph's Hospital in Eureka. Really huge effort on their part to stand that up while they're in the middle of this surge with their own resources. They have now a couple of nurses from the state who've come in to help out with that as well. And as I mentioned in the report, we're looking at ways to expand this to more in the community without a physician order. So hopefully that's something we can get done very soon, as was done in Del Norte and allow people to basically self-refer to that monoclonal antibody clinic. Schools are in session and we are working very closely with HCOE and, and all of the schools to, you know, track cases and gather data, looking for signs of an outbreak in, in the school setting. What I'll say is we are just seeing a tremendous number of cases in the schools. And that is because we are having a tremendous number of cases in the community. We're picking those up because we're doing enhanced testing in the schools. So I think we're picking up a lot more cases than would have been picked up otherwise, which is good because then we can identify those in the classroom, isolate those folks, get them, you know, home where they should be isolating and, and keep the kids in school and keep them from, from spreading COVID in the schools. So we're continuing to, to rework the, the investigations program within the schools and, and also just kind of rework our investigations program overall. We are, you know, moving away from the ability to investigate every single case that comes in Humboldt County. This is something that's been done by many jurisdictions, month, many months ago. Some of them as far back as the winter surge of last, of earlier in this year had stopped investigating every case just to, due to the sheer volume. So we kept that up much longer than most counties. We're going to focus our resources on places where we can have the biggest impacts. So schools, the skilled nursing facilities, other long-term care facilities, shelters, homeless shelters, other areas of congregate living and the jails. I think Sophia, Director Pereira was mentioning the vaccination effort. We continue to, you know, strongly support the vaccination effort. Vaccine is by far the, the best way to prevent this disease and address it as a, a social concern and a community concern. So we will continue to do that. We will, do want to encourage anyone who hasn't been vaccinated yet to please go out and get vaccinated for those who are eligible. For those who are in the immunocompromised group as defined by the CDC in early August, please seek out a additional third shot if you've already received the first two of your series. And I think that's good for now. We'll, you know, continue to, to work on all of these measures as best we can around, you know, vaccination treatments, support of the hospitals, prevention measures within our institutions to try to prevent the spread of, of COVID-19. And look forward to discussion and any questions that anyone might have today. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hoffman. Supervisor Wilson, since you pulled the item, we'll go to you first to see the specifics you'd like to hear about.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I really, what I wanted to emphasize was the current change that we see and, and, and ask about, I mean, do we, do we think that that leveling off and decline is just, is, is coming from just because the load has been so high and we, and we're just get, actually just getting through a high percentage of the vulnerable population. And what are we seeing in trends with, with school age unvaccinated? Kids, basically the below 12 and below. And are there any updates on the vaccination timeline for those, for those youth?
Yeah, all great questions Supervisor Wilson. I think that you know, what we are seeing is like I mentioned, a lot of cases in the younger folks because that is the unvaccinated, you know, a large proportion of the unvaccinated who are left. Again, I don't think that is, we're not seeing evidence that that's coming from the schools themselves. With all of the precautions that are in place in the schools, you know, we really are not seeing that spread there, but it happens outside of school. So when families get together with unvaccinated, other unvaccinated families or, or, you know, even potentially with vaccinated family members now that we're seeing spread among the vaccinated. So the, it, it really there, while we are seeing that increase in that population, I think that you know, the, the things that are in place in the schools are protecting them there. Vaccination will absolutely protect them more. Once we have that available, that will become available. Hopefully, we're starting to see signs that that could be approved as soon as late October with potential rollout for starting to vaccinate the five to 11-year-olds sometime in November. So potentially before, you know, the, the end of this semester for the, the under 12, we might be able to get many folks fully vaccinated in that timeframe before the winter break if, if that timeline holds. As for the, the other part of the question about is this, you know, is this the end? I, I I don't know. I think that it certainly, like I said, it's encouraging. Everyone in healthcare could use a little reprieve right now. Certainly, we have seen many times in the past where there is this little dip and then there's sort of a second wave right afterwards. The, we always trail the statewide data by a few weeks. The state was seeing this trend a few weeks ago and we were not. So we are kind of still following that, that trend of being a few weeks behind. And in the last few days, we've seen a little bit of an uptick in the statewide numbers. So that could be a sign that there is a going to be a small uptick again here locally in the next few weeks. I, I wouldn't be surprised if we see that. Whether or not it'll get back to the numbers we had over the course of the last month or two, I think, you know, is going to depend a lot on vaccination, on people's behaviors. And, you know, the, the access to the monoclonal antibody could also have a really big impact on the hospital if we could get that more broadly available to the community.
I appreciate that. I mean, we, we all understand that our cumulative decision-making processes here have, are what we see often is like on the backs of our community members, on the backs of our, of our business owners and, and those sorts of things. But then what we don't see, but we're starting, you know, we hear about is really the impacts to our medical staff and where, where it all gets concentrated. Really, that's, that's where it is. And so I just can't emphasize enough how, how our personal and sort of community decision-making really has huge impacts on a, on a, you know, on a critical infrastructure, human infrastructure of our community. And I, I want to, I just think it's just very, very important. We know what the mechanisms are to keep these numbers low and I, I highly encourage people to continue with their vaccination and, and masking as we move forward. And some of these things will become, which is the, the, it, it appears that COVID is becoming endemic if it's not already considered endemic. And so we will continue to see, continue to see a lot of these things a year from now. Now, I think two years from now will not be the same as two years in the future for, by any, by any measure. And I think, I think we're all understanding that now. And I appreciate the work you guys are doing. Thanks.
And Supervisor Bushnell?
Thank you. Through the chair, Dr. Hoffman, I was wondering, while whatever anybody's opinions are, there are people that are not going to get vaccinated. And I'm wondering if you have some options or suggestions for that group of people that are not wanting to get vaccinated? Are there places they can look, what they should do? If they do get COVID, what are some recommendations? I, I don't, we don't ever talk about that, so.
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Bushnell. You know, I, I think, you know, first off, I would just say there are very few people who medically should not get this vaccine. So when we look at medical contraindications to the COVID-19 vaccine, it's a, a very small group of folks who've had severe reactions in the past to either this particular vaccine or to similar vaccines with, with the exact same ingredients or components. You know, something we hear a lot about and, you know, people talking about their immunocompromised and so they, or they have a weakened immune system and they, they shouldn't get a vaccine. And so I'd encourage those people who think that they're immunocompromised or, or have a weakened immune system to actually look at the research and the data because that is a group that should be getting the vaccine, including.
So I, I'm sorry, but yeah, I understand all that. And we went over that earlier. I'm asking for the group that aren't going to do it. And I understand that we are suggesting and even putting it out there. So I, you know, I've had people ask that and say they're not going to get the vaccine, but what are some options for them? Or some guidelines if that is so their choice. So I was hoping you could hit on that.
Yeah, so I apologize. I was getting to that. So for the folks who really have strong fundamental beliefs against vaccines or against this particular vaccination, you know, that go beyond medical concerns or, you know, other things that we've addressed in the past around, you know, some of the maybe misinformation or mistruths that are out there. What I would recommend is for those folks to again, you know, consider talking to people who have been vaccinated to get their opinions. To, you know, look to leaders in your community who might be vaccinated and discuss it with them. And if it really comes down to the, that you are, are not able to or willing to get the vaccine, you know, in this time right now, and we still have very high cases, would recommend that you continue to mask, that you stay away from gatherings and places that you could get COVID-19. You know, that you really take a lot more precautions, especially if you're in a higher risk group like, you know, someone who's over the age of 65 or has multiple medical conditions, has conditions that are known to be associated with worse outcomes for COVID-19 such as, you know, obesity, hypertension, cardiovascular disease, diabetes, chronic kidney disease, chronic liver problems. So for those folks, if they get COVID-19, the monoclonal antibody clinic that we were just talking about is a good option. It's a, you know, when it's done early in the course, before someone gets very sick, it can prevent that illness from progressing to the need for hospitalization. So that's something that's been utilized in a lot of communities and has helped to decrease the hospitalization rate.
So can I, can I interrupt right there and just say that clinic is available in Humboldt County? Where?
So that's at St. Joseph's Hospital in Eureka and currently is available through a physician referral form. So you do need to have a physician refer you to that clinic. And again, we're working on ways to open that up to potentially not have to have that barrier where people could, could just call in and get seen in that clinic as was done in some other counties throughout the response. So you know, otherwise, I, I think, you know, just in general, what we can all do to, you know, improve our, our health is again, masking, avoiding crowds and large gatherings, especially if you're unvaccinated or have high-risk groups, you know, taking good care of yourself, exercising, eating well, you know, doing all the things we would always do to avoid any other virus. But this one is particularly problematic as we all know in that it can lead to such poor outcomes for a lot of people who get it.
So is there, like I've seen lots of suggestions to keep your immune system up of vitamins and such like that to take? And I guess you could probably just look that up if you were so choosing that path.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, there's no recommended vitamin mixture that is proven to reduce your chances of getting COVID or if you do have COVID to reduce the risk of progression, progression. So really prevention is the number one thing. So not getting COVID in the first place. And then again, if you do get COVID, the proven treatments would be, you know, either monoclonal antibody treatment early in the course before you're hospitalized. And then once people are hospitalized, we have, you know, several treatments that are being utilized in the hospital and, you know, including things like basic things like oxygen and respiratory support. And then things like steroids and remdesivir, which is an antiviral medication that is being used pretty widely in the, in the hospital. But you know, really it's a prevention effort, want to prevent people from getting to that point.
Thank you. I, I want to recognize that, you know, I, I know what your thoughts as a doctor are. I just want to have the conversation because not everybody is choosing that path. And so I, I just really want to have that conversation full-rounded. And I do understand, you know, for you as a doctor, you know, your thoughts for prevention and, you know, to adhere you about the vaccine. And so I just, I just want to have the conversation though. Thank you.
I wanted to ask, oh wait Supervisor John, go ahead.
Well, thank you. Yeah, good discussion. You know, it does seem like it's all about choice, right? We hear that a lot that some people are choosing not to do it. And I would just ask those folks that if you do get COVID, are you going to choose not to go to the hospital? That's a choice too, right? And I don't mean to be harsh, frankly, I don't at all, but it seems to me that people are choosing not to get the vaccine, but when they get really sick, they're choosing to go to the hospital. And that's just putting a massive strain on our nurses, our hospitals and our community. And it just, there's something about that that just doesn't seem fair, especially when there's no beds for people that are trying to deal with other life-saving emergencies. But all the beds are full in the ICU. So I just would ask people that I respect that you want to make a choice to not take the vaccine, but maybe you might want to choose to not then get hospitalized afterwards to save those beds for those that, that need that. I don't know, you know, it sounds harsh, but really isn't that what we're doing? Making choices here?
Supervisor Bushnell?
I just want to say that if you're sick and you feel the need that you need to go to the hospital, I don't think that's, you need to go to the hospital. And people have choices. And I understand what you're saying, Steve. However, I'm not going to say, tell anybody that chooses not to get the vaccine that if you feel the need that you need to go to the hospital. I, I don't want to say that. Personally, I'm just not going to, you know, medical free, free to medically choose is everybody's choice. And I understand that the vaccine's out there and that it's very difficult when we see people not choosing to utilize that and they get sick. But it's still, you know, we, our hospitals provide a service. And if you're sick and you need to go to the hospital, please do.
Okay, so I wanted to ask Dr. Hoffman or throw this out there. I mentioned this at the last time we had an update. And I know there's other communities where, you know, businesses are required to do proof of vaccination. And that's not what I'm mentioning here. I would like to know, you know, I've talked to several businesses and they're half and half on, you know, whether they want to do this, but I hope we can find a way to support the ones who do want to do that. So their employees stay safe and you know, and they don't have to face getting shut down because an employee got sick. So I, I don't know if anyone else has had that conversation with people, but I just hope that if you, if someone wants to go into a business and they do decide to ask whenever, I don't know if they would just ala blue, but I just hope people respect the choices that the businesses are making because I think they're trying to protect their own employees and, and the public. So I just don't know if that's coming here with anyone, but I, I knew, I know the conversation is happening. Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, this is a clarifying question for Dr. Hoffman. So it, currently a business can, if they so choose, require customers to show proof of vaccination upon entry and can advertise that as such, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Appreciate that. I mean, I've seen, I've been to a few events. That's been the case and where people get turned away without proof of vaccination. It's, I have to tell you, I, I went to one and a friend of mine was not vaccinated and they were, they couldn't go in that thing. And a week later they got vaccinated. It's just, they're just finally at that place where the inconvenience of it really, and, and, and they have not gotten sick since then. So all, all's well, it ends well on that particular note. But I, I, we have seen other communities really do take this a lot more. Like San Francisco, New York and other places. And I, we, we as supervisors are getting emails associated with that, people asking us about that. Do we have any of smaller counties that are, that are being able to pull that off? Because I know part of this is whether, whether or not businesses have the staff to be able to administer that. And then whether or not we have the capacity to enforce something like that as well. So what, what has it been kind of the statewide conversations with relationship to that?
Yeah, great questions. I, you know, off the top of my head, I can't give you the list of all of the counties, but there, there are a number of counties. We're looking at a number of different solutions to this. And so they, they really range the gamut. You know, I think as we heard this week from the president about mandates for vaccine for, you know, upwards of 100 million workers. It is something that we are going to see more and more. We know that locally, some businesses, some, you know, large governmental entities are considering vaccine mandates because it's not just, you know, a, a personal choice, but it's a business choice. When a business is faced with covering the expenses of, of a vaccine that's free, it's widely available, it's highly effective versus unvaccinated workforce who has a large number of days off sick, potential hospital, you know, and other healthcare-related fees. I think from a risk management standpoint, it's pretty clear which side a lot of businesses are going to fall on just from a purely financial standpoint. So I, you know, those are the conversations that are happening. You know, we've already seen the statewide mandates that came down from the governor's office around healthcare workers, jails and other incarcerated worker, people who work in those settings, schools and in terms of expanding it beyond workforces and into other things like places like San Francisco, New York have done where it's required to have proof of vaccination to get into most establishments that are inside. So like restaurants, bars, movie theaters, that sort of thing. You know, certainly does put more pressure on the community to, to move towards vaccination. And I think really it And I think really it comes down to again, that business decision of what makes the most sense for a business in in that area and that locale to to move forward on that. I think that's really what's behind also a lot of those decisions statewide and and nationally. So we we know the health implications and we know the health benefits of vaccination. But I think they're what we're starting to get at is really the financial implications of largely unvaccinated workforce and what that does to the bottom line of of businesses.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I just have a follow up to that because it seems like we, most of these vaccination requirements come with a with a sort of an option, the testing option that comes with it. So in some ways, it seems like it's a vaccination slash testing mandate. It's not really just a vaccination mandate by itself. It has that option associated with it. Is that, I mean, that's what I'm seeing at least at the state level.
There's two, there's sort of two levels. So we have, you know, vaccine mandates where it's mandated. So healthcare workers are mandated to be vaccinated by the end of this month or, you know, face whatever repercussions from their local, whoever their local governing body is. So, you know, that order covered many different entities and and most, all of those have some sort of statewide governing licensing board that oversees them. So that's, those all do have the religious or medical exemption. So we'll, you know, be watching and see what that looks like in terms of the exemptions, but that is not. And if you have an exemption, you can test and continue in your job, but that's very different than the, what we'd call the vaccinate or test mandates where you can have a personal exemption, like more like what supervisor Bushnell is talking about, which is, you know, people just for whatever reason deciding not to and and not having to have a medical or religious exemption. And in those cases, people with with that personal exemption would would be required to test weekly. And that's fairly widespread also that, you know, the presidential announcements cover both of those for different workforces. One thing I will say about the vaccinate or test is we are learning very quickly that our testing abilities might not match our, all of these mandates where, you know, we're struggling with that locally here in in Humboldt County for all of the the folks that are now required to test for various reasons, whether it's for school or work or or they're just ill and need to be tested. You know, it's really straining our resources. And I think, again, from a practical financial standpoint, it's a very expensive way to go about things to test someone at the cost of, you know, hundreds of dollars a week per person versus a free vaccine that is highly effective and and very safe. So the the cost differential again for vaccinate or test versus a vaccine mandate is is puts a lot of strain on the employers or the business to cover those costs if they can't be recouped and and also on the healthcare system for a very expensive weekly test that wouldn't be necessary if someone was vaccinated.
All right. Any other questions before we go to public comment? Oh, we got a public comment?
If actually, can I just add one more thing on that before we move on to public comment? Testing is not recommended or required from a public health standpoint for fully vaccinated people. So when we are talking about the type of surveillance testing for, you know, these vaccination mandates, they do not apply to people who are fully vaccinated. So we do not want or encourage or support that testing weekly, those who are fully vaccinated. And that's the CDC's recommendations currently. They are still to be, if if they are exposed to someone with COVID-19, we recommend a fully vaccinated person get tested about three to five days after they're exposed or if they have symptoms. But from the standpoint of the surveillance and the weekly testing, we do not recommend that fully vaccinated people undergo that kind of surveillance.
All right. So I think we'll go out to public comment and we'll go back to the board after that. We do have a couple of hands up. Again, if you were, when your number is called, just press star six to unmute and you'll have three minutes to talk. So we'll first go to the last four digits, zero, one, one, six. And if that's you, press star six.
Hello, actually, Peter back again here. So I have like three kind of major questions about this. And one of them has to do with what Dr. Hoffman was just talking about, actually, is the people who are vaccinated in the workplaces not being tested. And it seems like it's being used as like a kind of coercion factor to people who are unvaccinated to get the vaccine. When now it's, you know, clearly apparent that whether, you know, if you are vaccinated, you can still get it and transmit it. So why would it only be to people who are unvaccinated that have to get tested in the workplace if everybody can get it and spread it?
Okay, we don't, we don't answer any questions at this point, Mr. Teeter. So just
So it's just in the in the notes so you can review it later then?
Yes, we're good. You can continue. You have, you have two minutes left to to continue commenting if you had your, wanted to get your other thoughts out or other questions.
Okay. And then also, and since there are no long-term studies on the vaccine, is there, is it wise to get everybody vaccinated? Is there a contingency plan for our human infrastructure if there are long-term side effects that all of a sudden take lots of people or potentially take lots of people out of our, you know, community? And has that been thought of? And also, like, in how our hospitals are reporting, like, I read something in the CDC where they're considering anything 14 days after vaccination, any instance that occurs in a hospital is not vaccine related. So I was wondering if our hospitals are doing this same practice and counting anything 14 days after vaccination as an unvaccinated incident? And then additionally, I was reading something about the convalescent blood supply and that vaccinated blood donations contaminate this. And I want to know if we have any measures in place to keep a separate blood supply for convalescent individuals that is not possibly contaminated by the vaccinated blood donations that kill off the antibodies. And I guess that's all I really have for now, but please consider those items.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Teeter. Our next commenter has the last four digits, digits of four, nine, three, seven. So if that's you, press star six to unmute. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Dan Berman. I'm a resident of McKinleyville and a Humboldt County employee. And I would like to say that listening to this conversation, all of the points that have been made about the health benefits and the financial impacts apply to all county employees. And I would like to encourage the Board of Supervisors to act in protection of public health by mandating vaccines for county employees. I understand that involves potentially negotiations with the union or multiple unions, but I go to work regularly in county facilities with other county employees. I have no way of verifying whether the people I work with are vaccinated outside of them choosing to share that information with me. And I think it would be protective of the public, protective of your employees and the county's finances and in the benefit of the public good and public health to require vaccination of all county employees. I think all of this misinformation, like we were just hearing about, that the blood supply of vaccinated people is dangerous. There's a lot of dangerous misinformation out there. The vaccines are safe. More than half of Americans have already gotten them. And COVID is going to continue to be a huge impact on death, on health, on on our economy until we can get more and more people vaccinated. And we have mandatory vaccination for many vaccines. Back to George Washington, it's established. This is what society is for. We impose some limitations on people in order to protect all of us. And mandatory vaccinations are a long established part of that. We are headed towards a future where everyone's going to get vaccinated against COVID. And we are just taking way too long to get there. And I would encourage you to do everything you can to protect county health employees and everyone in the county by requiring Humboldt County employees to be vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Our next speaker is three, zero, five, three. Just press star six to unmute.
Good afternoon. Thomas Mulder, can you hear me?
Yes, you have three minutes, Thomas. Welcome.
Hi, so I had to share a lot of the same sentiments to your first caller. I missed the gentleman's name. If we're talking about testing, but only testing the people that are unvaccinated, but it's proven that vaccinated people can still contract and more importantly, they can still pass the virus on to others even without being symptomatic, so with the asymptomatic. It just seems like it's a really big us versus them. I think I really appreciate Supervisor Bushnell's questions about what can people that don't choose to be vaccinated do? I really took offense to the comment of people saying, well, maybe you shouldn't go to the hospital. It, we need to get in a thing as a community that we respect people's choices and respect their feelings, religious, medical, whatever that may be, and talk about solutions. I feel that it's as a community, we need to stay away from us versus them. I think nationwide, it's really political and it's pretty disgusting. I think mandates, unless it's really, really proven, we need to stay away from that. I think our county is a little more conservative than San Francisco, so I don't know if I would use that as a justification to even think about vaccine mandates. Think about what people's choices are and as long as they're being respectful to other community members. Unless every single community member is getting tested every single week, whether you're vaccinated or not, from the studies I've seen, it's, it is, yes, reducing risk of death, but it's still not reducing the risk of spread. So please think about that, especially when you start talking about trying to mandate people trying to say us versus them. We're all human and respect each other. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Thomas. We have one hand left up. So if you want to comment on this item, call in now and press star nine. At this moment, we'll go to the last four digits of five, three, zero, zero. And if that is you, press star six to unmute.
Yes, I'm here. This is Adam Lustig. You're all familiar with me from your emails. But but I'd like to cover because, you know, the 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 thing I was going to talk about mainly was this distinction between vaccinated and unvaccinated. Like, for instance, my son at school with the contract chasing. The vaccinated don't have to get tested, but the unvaccinated do. But we all know that both can transmit the disease. So it's obviously a coercion tactic and it's not based on any medical science. And then I'd really like to talk about ivermectin. This drug has been used worldwide by humans, hundreds of millions of doses. It's effectively as safe as aspirin. Now, you can debate whether or not it works. But what's the problem with right to try and medical freedom? If you're facing a potentially deadly disease, why are you not able to take something that that's safe that a lot of studies are showing it works and the risk versus reward, it doesn't make any sense to suppress it unless you're specifically suppressing it to promote vaccination. We all know the Emergency Use Act cannot be used if there's any known proven treatments. We don't trust the FDA when they tell us that they can't de-schedule cannabis because they don't have enough information. We don't trust the FDA when they told us that GMO crops are safe, the county banned them. It's not like we always trust the FDA around here. And I I just don't understand why this blind trust of the FDA is going on now and why you're all participating in the suppression of ivermectin. We have pharmacies here in town that won't fill prescriptions. We have doctors that won't prescribe it. I mean, the hospital will just sit there and let you die rather than letting you try something that's not going to hurt you that could potentially work. The meantime, they give you remdesivir at $3,000 a shot and it's causing kidney failure and liver failure and all these problems. I mean, none of this makes any sense, just like the the testing of of unvaccinated and not testing vaccinated people doesn't make any sense. And, you know, I'm just asking you to to apply some logic and not just blindly follow what you get from the state and you get from the federal government. It's disturbing that our local leaders are just sitting up here just repeating what they're hearing from on high, not listening to anyone else, not listening to any alternative perspectives. So again, I urge you, put together a committee of local health practitioners that offer alternatives to the mainstream narrative and listen to them and work with them. I mean, Dr. Hoffman, Dr. Fauci even says, take vitamin D, vitamin C, zinc. Okay, there are plenty of people that are promoting these simple things that people can do to raise their immunity. The vaccine, if you look at Israel, they have one of the highest vaccination rates in the world. Their cases are exploding. Four out of five people in the hospital are vaccinated. This vaccine is not the magic bullet. You know, you bring up Biden, he told us, get the shot, you won't get COVID. Get the shot, you can take your mask off. Okay?
All right. Thank you for calling in. All right. Thank you. All right, we'll go on to our next commenter is the last four digits of zero, three, two, six. If you're zero, three, two, six, press star six to unmute. Welcome.
Hi, this is Charles Wilson. I just, I want to make, first, I wanted to comment on some of the impacts of the current public health rules which are having on our society. Now, seven years ago, my wife had, we'd been married 58 years. Anyway, I I could hold her.
Okay.
I could, I held her hand for ten, ten 10 days when she died. But anyway, this other lady, we know, three months ago, her, she was married for 48 years. And she, her husband went down to Oakland for five months and they wouldn't let her talk to him. They wouldn't let her see him and they wouldn't let her talk to him during that five months that he died. And then he died and then she's, well, she's wandering here now. And then another lady, we, she called, we called her, she called her, called us on Saturday for help. She just got out of the hospital. She'd been in the hospital for three weeks. And meanwhile, her husband, who was healthy at the time, he went in the hospital and 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 died. We're still looking for his body today. His, what's this, Tuesday? We're still looking for his body and for his car and that kind of stuff. And the thing is, you have all these requirements and everything there and they're having an impact on society, just like the mandates on the nurses. Hoffman says we don't have enough nurses to staff some of the hospital beds and everything like that. And then over in Hawaii, they're trying to fire the police and fire depart, fire people who've been there 25, 30 years and it's going to impact it more than just, you can't just hire them all just because we have the signs down at the Burger King saying, now hiring, we hire these people that they laid off and get more money from being unemployed than working. You can't just expect to hire them. And then when you have these, all these the Health Department is listening to itself. When we've talked to 45,000 people in the last six years, and these people that we talked to, they're unvaccinated, but the thing is, they're using their own experience. They're not listening to his. They're not listening to his, which my call misinformation because they have their own experience from their own family having problems with it and everything there. And they're not considering alternatives. They're not considering the ivermectin. They're not considering hyperbaric instead of the, the, all the other types of things there. And so they get to the point where they don't trust the health department. They don't trust them and they won't trust them. And they're not going to just be educated like Hoffman says. They're just going to be educated and taught the proper way. Anyway, thank you. My wife had a, she had a, some comments here. She's separate, has some separate comments from mine. I wonder if you can have, listen to her. Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll start her.
Okay.
Three minutes, hold on, man. Let, hold on, let me get you a timer set. All right.
Thank you, appreciate that. I'm a nurse, I case since there 45 years. My point is, right now, we are short of staff and people have personal experiences like uncle or a family member took the vaccine and die. And somebody are lucky, they are surviving. But you have, everybody's body constitution is different. So you've got to think about others. Right now is mandate, pretty soon, eating poop is mandate. Are you going to do it? Nobody should force anybody, I'm sorry. If you want to be a communist country, keep on doing that. Keep complying, it will never end. And people are so selfish. I had people, they are fine. They say, you do, do you want to go out? Do you want to go out of the door? You don't vaccine, I might be six foot under, where can I go? Like I say, this is so wrong. People work for 25 years, go in and out of danger to first responder to take care of us. And right now, because of this, this is experimental agent. Don't call it vaccine. The government, the big farmers lie to us at the beginning. Vaccine, vaccine, and most of you think vaccine is saying, no, this is not vaccine. Please, remember. And then the person want to do this, want to depopulation. And then we want to be a communist country. If anybody have a mind, I don't call, I don't know if you're vaccinated or not vaccinated. If you want to be a communist country, keep doing this. Nobody's in mandate anybody, okay? Free freedom is a choice. Love, liberty and happiness, okay? Thank you and be well. You need to.
All right, thank you. And I just, I'm, I notice I'm having, the timer is not necessarily going off with the last 30 seconds. I mean, that one did. So for this last speaker, I'll let you know when you only have 30 seconds left. And you are number five nine nine six. If you can press star six to unmute.
Hi, this is Brianna Owen. And I just want to say that whoever was discouraging people from going to a hospital, shame on you. That's really disgusting. We would never discourage, we would never deny care to a drunk driver or a drug user, a cigarette smoker, someone with obesity. It's just disgusting. And I believe it was Bushnell who would not back that statement up. And thank you for having some common sense. I personally have been vaccine injured. And I have a permanent medical exemption from all vaccines that I received many years ago. And this whole idea of mandates and, and this us against them is just really been upsetting and causing a lot of anxiety. I just, I just want to say, we need to unite, as one speaker said. Everyone, I'm really nervous, sorry guys. And, you know, I just, I'm really upset that we wouldn't even encourage mandates. The vaccine has been known to spread. It does not stop the spread. We should be testing everyone. It shouldn't be just unvaccinated. This is, it's just ludicrous, some of the ideas that are being, you know, propelled. And I just want to say that and thank you.
Great, thank you. Again, and zero, excuse me, nine seven nine three. Leave your next.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, how long do I have?
Three minutes. But I'll give you, I'll let you know in the last 30 seconds or left because I'm having a problem with the timer here.
Okay.
You have three.
I'll pay attention to the clock on my phone as well. Oh yeah, my name's Jason Robo. I'm a certified personal trainer. I also study plant-based nutrition and through Cornell. I've also done the Science of Well-Being course through Yale. I got my political science degree at Humboldt State. And yeah, so I know a thing or two about stuff. And yeah, I'm totally disgusted with this whole COVID pandemic. I think it's a total joke in the sense that it's a zero risk bias issue. One in, one in five people die of smoking-related disease. One in six die of heart disease. Those are substantial numbers. And so I think that masks are maybe more useful if you use them when you're sitting at Colonel Sanders' table. Because yeah, we're just, we're eating vorably. We have subsidies for just all bad food. As far as eating healthy is concerned, which is something we shouldn't be doing if we care about our health. They've almost literally tossed the salad. We cannot eat healthy because the choices don't exist. And we should probably promote, especially we have struggling farmers with the economy right now, maybe converting to more growing your vegetables and such. Anyways, heart disease, one interesting side effect of that is erectile dysfunction. That's your body telling you it's not screwing around. And yeah, we're not talking about that. So I feel like listening to the government, corporations and the media to cure our woes is like listening to Ben the Cranberries to cure urinary tract infection. And we're just going to keep being pissed off and sick. And I don't think they want to cure anything like, like Alzheimer's. I like to say, forget about it. There's nothing that they want to cure. And that's why they suppress things like ivermectin. And yeah, I know, I have friends that work in hospitals. They're doctors and nurses and respiratory therapists. They say they don't wear their masks in the break room because they know they don't do anything. So I feel like it's just like some crazy cult. As I said, using the mask to keep yourself from eating unhealthy food would probably be the best thing you can do with it. But as far as health workers are concerned, I feel like that this is kind of like the point that's made repeatedly about them is it's, it's really to support the healthcare industry, which is really a sick care industry. And if you guys really care about health, you wouldn't force anybody. This is coercion, it's illegal under the Nuremberg laws.
Okay, Dan, I just let you know. You have 30 seconds left. I just wanted to let you know, so.
Okay. And yeah, and technically, from what I understand, that the penalty is death. So that's pretty horrendous, but nobody seems to care. I would really appreciate it if government would, actually, if you care about human health that you would promote human health and maybe like healthier food choices. People getting vitamin D, no one's talked about that. We're about to lose the window. You only get it for a certain amount of hours every day during certain parts of the year. We need to supplement that. Eighty percent of the deaths, we're deficient in that. So anyways.
Thank you very much, Jason. All right, we'll go back to the board. And I know some questions were laid out there. I don't know if anyone has an answer at this point in time or supervisor Hoffman. Sorry, I almost demoted you. Dr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Chair Bass. Yeah, I do want to address one issue, one or two of those issues. Thank you, everyone, for bringing up, you know, some really great concerns that are out there. And I want to address the testing of the fully vaccinated. It was brought up by several of the callers. The, the CDC, CDPH and our local public health data all support that fully vaccinated people, while they can get this disease, and yes, they can spread it. Both of those are much, much lower in folks who are fully vaccinated. So this is the reasoning behind not needing to test people on a regular basis who are, are fully vaccinated. You know, the other thing we're seeing is that people who are in an area that has higher vaccination rates have much lower rates of spread among those fully vaccinated. So if you're in an area that has higher levels of unvaccinated folks, your risk as a fully vaccinated person of getting COVID and spreading it is much higher because the, the level of the virus in the community is much, much higher than it is in a fully vaccinated area. Our local data definitely supports this. If you've been following the graphs we've been putting out each week on Friday for the last several weeks, you know, our case rate among the fully vaccinated is much lower. That's something we've seen, you know, in all the data across the board. So the risk is much lower to both the fully vaccinated person and to the people who are around the fully vaccinated person. The chances of that person giving COVID to someone else appear to be, if not 50% or, or more or less than someone who was unvaccinated. So, so that, those are the reasonings. There's strong scientific basis for that. And of course, we'll continue to follow that. If we see something differently, our policy would change and recommend that we, you know, go back to surveillance testing for a fully vaccinated person as well. As far as ivermectin, this is a treatment that is no scientific basis to support its use. And we are seeing increasing numbers of folks, not locally here yet, but certainly in other places where ivermectin has been pushed by many people in their community, that we are seeing increasing levels of people coming in with toxicity. It is a drug that has human use. People are correct about that. The, the dosages that people are taking unsupervised for this are, are creating another health concern. And there have been many hospitalizations from ivermectin overdose due to that. And so I want to assure people that we are looking at all therapies for COVID-19. You know, don't, don't disagree with, you know, the, the use of something like vitamin D or zinc as a supplement. Across, you know, certainly something that people, again, have the choice to, to do from a scientific basis, though, and a recommendation at a medical level, as a medical professional. I cannot support those as something that will prevent COVID-19. But certainly, you know, being healthy, living a healthy lifestyle, eating a healthy diet, you know, taking good care of yourself is, is definitely going to reduce your risk of, of both getting COVID-19 and having a severe outcome. So certainly support all of those. As a policy level decision, though, something that's going to affect all 135,000 people in Humboldt County, I don't think those are treatments that will make a big difference, like something like vaccination would or monoclonal antibodies that we are supporting through our public health efforts. Thank you for that time to respond.
All right. Well, thank you for being on with us today, kind of at the little bit of the last minute. And so, yeah, Supervisor Wilson, and then we, we will get a short lunch break here.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to conclude with a thank you to everybody, our staff on this. I want to say, I did hear a comment that they go to the hospital where they, they let you die. I just want to really clear, no one in the hospital or in our medical facilities are letting people die. They're working overtime to keep people alive at every level. And, and they're using every means possible to do so. And I just, I think that that's important to, to point out. And I, and I don't want, I, I want to be clear that I hear so much that unless something has an absolute 100% effectiveness, it should be questioned and not used. And, and I want to point out that nothing we do is 100% effective in what we do. The reductions in the statistics of, of getting this disease or any other disease and why we have public health in general and public health policy is to basically take those numbers down enough that they are not endemic or, or completely taking over everything. And so those reduced chances in a cumulative impact can actually take it down to almost zero. And we've seen that in, in disease after disease that we've actually had to battle in our society. It's, again, it's like a stop sign. It's like you stop at the stop sign, but it doesn't guarantee someone's not going to, you're not going to get in an accident, right? But blazing through those stop signs and ignoring them and that will definitely increases that capacity to, but just not to injure yourself, but other people as well. And I'm hoping that we can all move forward with that. And so thank you, Chair Bass, for allowing me to pull this one from the, from the agenda and shorten our lunch a bit and hopefully we can move along. Thanks.
All right, well, thank you. And we don't have any official action to take other than say thank you to the team for being on and, you know, keeping us informed. So with that, we do have a break until our one o'clock time set. So we'll see you then. Well, welcome back. Hopefully everyone at least got to grab a lunch. And we're here on our one o'clock time set, which is Presentation on the County's 2021 State Legislative Program. And we are joined by some special guests, but I'll turn this over to Sean Quincy to go from there.
Good morning, Chair Bass, members of the board. Sean Quincy, Deputy County Administrative Officer with the Humboldt County Administrative Office. September is always a great month for us in Humboldt County because we get to get visits from our friends at Shaw, Yoder, Antuish, Milger and Ling, in particular Karen and Paul, who guide us through state legislative and regulatory issues throughout the year and help us advocate on Humboldt County's behalf. Yesterday, your board or members of your board and department heads met with Karen and Paul to discuss issues that are affecting their respective departments and areas of expertise. And this, that input in those meetings will help inform our 2022 legislative platform. And we are in the process of developing that. And with that, I'll turn it over to Karen and Paul, who are here to present a wrap-up of the 2020 state legislative, or 2021 California Legislative Session.
Okay. Hi, thank you, Sean. I'll be kicking it off. Good afternoon, supervisors. Good to see you. I'm sorry, we're not doing this in person. Just can't believe we're still in this situation. But I'm happy to be here, at least virtually, to see you all. And had a great series of meetings yesterday. Your, your CEO team is, is great. Definitely miss Amy, but Alicia and Sean have done a magnificent job this year. And we've been working on quite a few things that are hopefully going to yield great things for you. I'm going to run through the budget and a few highlights that are specific to Humboldt. And then I'll hand it over to Paul to crystal ball the, the next year. It's definitely an interesting day to be presenting to a board of supervisors, given what's happening at the polls today. But I'll let Paul go through that. So as you are well aware, anyway, there was a lot of money that we were not expecting to, to see. You know, a year ago, when the legislature adjourned, it had adopted a budget that was kind of austere because we weren't sure what was going to happen financially. You know, California's budget health really is tied to how the stock market does because the highest earners in California drive the, the health of the bottom line of the state budget. So as long as Wall Street's doing fine, which it did, California had a lot of money come in. Plus, of course, the American Rescue Plan money and the CARES Act money. So there was just money on, money on, money. So when the final budget was done this year, the total general fund expenditures and special funds was slightly less than $200 billion. $196.440 billion is in the enacted budget. And that also includes a $21 billion reserve at the end of the current year budget. And there's, when they were coming up with a spending plan, ultimately is about $47 billion of surplus money that was unanticipated being built into the budget. It is important to note about 75% of that is one-time spending since we know that, you know, when California falls off a cliff, we fall hard. And so a lot of that new money is one-time money. And we did, as a state, receive about $27 billion in the American Rescue Plan. And the state has until the end of 2024 to spend all of that in ways to help public health, central services, helping alleviate the, the drop-off in revenues that may have happened. And also to build out water. and also to build out water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. That's what that money can be used for. There's also a lot, as you could imagine with what we're dealing with right now, a lot of money being invested in the drought emergency and also wildfire. That's the drumbeat. It was just louder and louder and louder. And so when the final final budget was enacted for calendar year twenty one, there was an additional several hundred million dollars invested in wildfire prevention and suppression. And we'll hopefully see reduced wildfire next year if if the Cal Fire and the the fire districts can get the money out the door into projects quickly. The resilience, the wildfire and resiliency package total was almost a billion dollars, mostly general fund. Some greenhouse gas or GGRF money was invested. It's notable that the the final budget did not provide additional funding to the high-speed rail, which had had been relying on the the greenhouse gas reduction fund. But there was a push to have a significant investment in high-speed rail in the twenty one, twenty two budget, and it did not come together, which has created some uncertainty for the the project overall. The budget still did have some money to deal with recycling, which, of course, is a huge concern in Humboldt County. There there are some efforts to try and get new redemption centers open. And we've been communicating with your delegation about that. And I know you've been talking to them directly as well. The what the treated wastewater extension came back. That was a big deal. And there's also, there was a bill to help deal with the organics waste diversion, which has really become quite a problem for counties that are trying to figure out how to comply with the organics. Senator Laird from Santa Cruz ran a bill that provided some additional relief to counties that were having trouble meeting that meeting the requirements in that bill. And there's funding that was in the budget that was just passed last week that further helped with that. There will not be in fiscal year twenty one, twenty two, a big new investment in the California Department of Public Health or local public health, which is sort of befuddling. But there is a commitment from the administration, starting in the next fiscal year, to do three hundred million dollars a year for several years to try to rebuild counties' public health departments, which have been, you know, hijacked by COVID. But there's other parts of the the departments that have really been impacted in a negative way by the all-hands-on-deck approach that's needed to to handle COVID. So there's going to be new money for that in the next fiscal year. And there's a lot of money on homelessness and housing, as you know, seven point four billion dollars for homelessness and housing. We've been communicating with your department staff to try to identify potential sources of funds to create new housing in your jurisdiction for your homeless population. Just the Homeless Coordinating Council actually just put out this morning a fantastic document that helps folks navigate where all the different pots of money are because it is spread across several parts of the state government. There was the Rental Assistance Program, which had a rough start. But there, the governor yesterday announced there were about a billion dollars into spending it or having been approved to spend money both on rental assistance for tenants who were unable to pay their rent during COVID. And also, a lot of folks struggle with paying their water bills, electric bills. And those, there's a billion dollars in the state budget to help folks pay their utility bills. And that is part of what the governor was talking about yesterday, was the billion dollars included, helping people catch up on their utility bills. A big piece, we talked to a couple of different departments and a few supervisors about what's going on with cannabis. The new Department of Cannabis Control was established through a trailer bill. And they're they're getting it up and running. Nicole Elliott, who ran the San Francisco Cannabis Office, is the director of that new state department. And we are going to be reaching out to her based on some concerns to her yesterday about what's going on in the the market. We've heard loud and clear. I did want to make sure to highlight, although you probably already know, because of Humboldt County's early action to create equity or, you know, to incorporate equity into how you are regulating cannabis in the county, there was an additional eighteen million dollars that was earmarked specifically for Humboldt County to help move folks through the permitting process and and have the and help the county help people get through the permitting process since the cultivation process is really challenging and can be quite daunting because of CEQA. The state wanted to recognize jurisdictions that had done the equity piece. And that was why there was that special earmark there for you. In addition, there was a two million dollar earmark in the state budget that was for the North Coast healthcare system. And it was, it's going through the Department of Healthcare Services, I believe, but there was that earmark for you. And then, of course, there was the money for Humboldt State to be become a Cal Poly. And that was nearly five hundred million dollars. It's very exciting. Congratulations to all of you that have been working on that. That was wonderful to see. And then there were a couple of bills I wanted to highlight. Clearly, wind energy, offshore wind energy has become a a big deal. And Humboldt County was at the very front of the line when AB five two five by Assembly Member Two from San Francisco introduced, he introduced that bill. We immediately got in touch with his office and coordinated with the the Coalition of Supporters. That bill is on the governor's desk. It helps set up the framework for how California can permit offshore wind as a new energy source. And it's going to be coordinated through the California Energy Commission. And we've helped connect staff with the commission to make sure that you're completely plugged in as they start working towards the plan. And the plan is supposed to be to the legislature by twenty twenty three. And then another bill that you were supportive of was a bill on taxation of electronic cigarettes and then using that money for various purposes that are all helping folks that are needing public assistance. And the tax from that would go that way. And then finally, the the piece that I think a lot of county administrators and county councils were very worried about during the pandemic, the governor issued an executive order allowing for counties and actually state agencies to meet remotely to help people maintain social distancing and stay safe and healthy. That executive order is going to run out here pretty soon. And it was our understanding that the governor was not in a position to be able to extend the executive order again, and legislation was required. AB three sixty one was sent to the governor in the last hours of the the session on last Friday night. And it is got an urgency clause in it. So the moment he signs it, it will become operative. And you can continue meeting remotely if you need to through the calendar year twenty twenty three. And it's double joined to a bill, AB three three nine, that does not affect you. It only applies to counties of two hundred and fifty thousand population or more, or two hundred and fifty thousand. But those are double joined. And so there was a kind of a tough moment for CSAC and the Urban Counties Caucus because three three nine requires some additional expenses that are going to have to be paid out as far as making those meetings more accessible to the to the public through remote testimony. But it involves investments on the county's behalf that they're going to be required to to make for the larger counties. The three sixty one is on the governor's desk. And important to note is that it includes state agencies. So I know you've you've got a member of the Coastal Commission on your board. So the Coastal Commission will be able to also continue to meet remotely even after the expiration of the executive order if he if the governor signs AB three sixty one. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I'll turn it over to Paul to give you a a crystal ball reading.
Great. Thanks, Karen. Good afternoon, Supervisors and staff and and members of the public. So I'm going to walk you through the next couple of months. And I'm going to start with the recall. It's, well, the recall election, to be clear. We'll see what what the results bring, starting at eight P M. tonight. We think we will actually have a lot of a lot to talk about it, probably eight oh five because of how many people voted by mail, by ballot, with California now having the law that everyone gets a, every registered voter gets a ballot in the mail with prepaid postage to return it. Fairly extraordinary. So so we may not have to wait until the morning for that. Assuming the governor isn't recalled, he, Governor Newsom, will have until October tenth to act on bills that were sent to him at the very end of this legislative year. How many bills were sent to him at the end? About seven to eight hundred bills. Typically, over the last twenty twenty years, give or take, the veto rate for bills sent at the very end of of a year runs around fifteen percent. So you'd expect a hundred, one hundred and fifty bills to get vetoed. However, the recall did have an impact on bills that were sent to the governor. We can go into specifics during questions and answers if the board members want. But there were bills that, you know, it's it's pretty widely known. The governor's office reached out and said, don't, don't, we're not necessarily giving a signal as to what we would ultimately do, what the governor would ultimately do on your bill. But if it's all the same to you, especially since we're in the first year of the two-year cycle, which I'll talk about more in a second, we just as soon have you hold that bill. There are some examples of those we can give if you'd like. But still, a lot of bills went to the governor. And I think the veto rate this year is actually going to be low because the governor's staff was reaching out, because authors weren't sending some bills down that might have been on the bubble. We think most of the ones that that did go to the governor probably more or less had a green light. Might have been a light green light, might have been a dark green light. But we still think they got, by and large, a green light. So what happens actually after October tenth? Is there anything to really be looking at the county should be thinking about before the legislature returns on January third? The number one thing we want to highlight to to you all today, and we discussed it with several of your groups yesterday, there's three billion dollars in the budget. In addition to the money for homelessness, there's three billion dollars to build out, reinforce the brick and mortar behavioral health system in California, board and cares, skilled nursing facilities, other facilities, to either build them in the first place or to expand existing facilities. Our firm is participating in that process. So are the behavioral health directors. We had a good conversation with, you know, your your behavioral health staff about this yesterday. What I really want the board and the public to know is, even though this money is really supposed to go for brick and mortar, for buildings, I'm happy to report that so far in the process, the state and its consultants have been very open to hearing about gaps in the behavioral health system in California. And it's critically important to Humboldt County. It's critically important to all counties. So we're going to be bird dogging that. They are supposed to issue a report in November. And I think everyone's going to need to to read that report very closely. It's probably the the one single largest thing that will happen during the the interim recess while the legislature is gone. So when they come back on January third, want to be clear, want to really underscore this to folks. We expect the legislature and the governor to budget in January of twenty twenty two to send new budget trailer bills to the governor and for the governor to act on them. Why is that? Karen mentioned some of the undone things from twenty twenty one, high-speed rail. She highlighted that. High-speed rail has money right now. It is estimated to start running short of money the middle of next year, a little bit before when the legislature would typically do its next budget, twenty two, twenty three. So we may see high-speed rail revisited in January. But as long as revenues keep coming in over projections, month over month over month, we think the legislature is going to want to spend that money and program it. Couple reasons for that. Twenty twenty two is an election year. If Governor Newsom survives the recall election, he has to file and run again for governor in the regularly scheduled gubernatorial election in twenty twenty two. It's also an election year for a lot of legislators. And as I think everybody knows, there's going to be redistricting. And and in fact, incumbent legislators may have to run in pretty different districts in twenty twenty two. And so the best way to get to know your constituents sometimes in a new district is to be able to tout some new programs that you passed in the state legislature. Little side note on redistricting. Folks may recall that in twenty ten, that redistricting commission actually, for a while, was talking about changing district orientation in Northern California from a north-south orientation to an east-west orientation. That conversation didn't last long. And I and I got to tell you, we're not picking that up this go around, tracking the commission. And if anything, we think this commission wants to home in even even more on communities of interest. And I think that means that your legislative districts will probably stick to the coast. And as far as we know, and as far as we can pick up from listening to to the commission's deliberations. I mentioned a couple of reasons why they might budget some more in January. I think the one thing I haven't mentioned yet is if the federal government passes anything close to what President Biden has put forward. And I know Senator Manchin wants to see the price tag reduced. But even if Senator Manchin's amount suggested amount, we really do expect there to be a very large allocation of new housing vouchers in California and a way for counties to keep a lot more people by by using Section Eight vouchers in their housing. That would be in addition to an SSI, big SSI bump that was in this year's budget. And some things are maybe coming together that might actually keep the most low-income folks who really are on the edge of of losing their housing, in their housing, in shelter. So if the federal government passes something like that and there's some new huge infusion of money, even in just one issue area, we think the legislature, especially if it's, for example, you know, that example I gave on vouchers, we think they're they're going to want to get that money out the door as quickly as it can. So very quickly, a couple of other items, and then we're happy to take questions. We are at halftime of the legislative session. We really are. It's just like a football game where we are at halftime. Congratulations Raiders fans last night. That was something else. I know Mattson's out there somewhere. Happy, happy as pie. But we are at halftime. And when they come back in January, I don't know if we've ever really focused on this in the past, but I want to make sure I do it today. When you go into the second year of the session, there's a lot of hullabaloo about, oh, bills that were introduced in the first year, they have to get out of the house of origin by the end of the month. That's true. If you introduce the bill January of this year and you're not out of your own house, you got to, you got to hustle. You got to do that by the end of January. The thing I think we don't highlight enough is that a lot of bills this year, go back to what I said about, you know, bills not going to the governor. A lot of those bills were all the way through the process and onto the floor of the second house. And then when the 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 stop sign got thrown up, what happens to those bills is they went on to the inactive files on the floors in the second house. So what I want to make sure everybody knows is there are a fair amount of controversial bills that literally only need one procedural motion in January, and that motion is to be taken off the inactive file. And then those bills can be voted on and sent to the governor, literally the first week that they come back. And so we have to stay vigilant at all times. And I think heading into twenty two, I really feel like that is especially true for counties. We could talk about initiatives if you want. The one that I want to highlight today is there's already an initiative to legalize sports gaming in California. Why do counties care? Because that initiative would impose fees on people who sports wager. Eighty-five percent of the revenues raised would go to fund homelessness programs and substance, mental health and substance abuse programs in California. The estimated revenue from that initiative is two billion dollars a year. Eighty-five percent of two billion dollars is, I think, one point seven billion dollars. I'm an English major, but I think it's one point seven billion dollars. That's a lot of money, and it would be ongoing. It would be a significant infusion of cash. What is the linkage between sports betting and those other issues? Arguably, not a lot. But that's the way the issue is formulated, and that's the way the issue is going to go to the voters. The team behind that initiative is basically the same team that got Governor Newsom elected, plus some other very very good, I know it's not a great adjective, but really, really good political consultants. It's quite a team that's been put together for that initiative. So I want to bring it to your attention. I echo what Karen said about the meetings yesterday. They were frankly some of the best I think we've ever had. I don't know why. But they just were. A lot of people really brought their A games. There's there's actionable proposals for next year. Multiple proposals for next year. Sean, Alicia, all the department heads, phenomenal job. And then last but, no, last but not least, always got to give kudos to your small but mighty state legislative delegation. To only have two, you sure have the right to. So happy to take any questions.
Trying to get unmuted. Anyone have a question for Paul or Karen at this point? Supervisor Bone?
Hey, how are you guys? Thanks for the time yesterday. Is there any chance, not necessarily just rural counties, but more so rural counties, of getting some one-time SB one funds? I mean, Caltrans, I mean, they can't hire enough people. I mean, they're they're hiring, you know, I mean, they've got, they're paving roads that have already they've got, they're paving roads that have already been paved. I mean, and we're sitting here with roads that haven't been repaved. Is there any chance to kind of get some of that money back to us? Because I think, I, I know it's down, the, what they thought it was going to be, but it's not down that much. But they have, they have been able to hire people and put people on. And I mean, they've probably hired 10 people from us in the last eight months. So with that being going on, I mean, I hate to pay them to compete with us.
Oh, Paul, you're on mute.
Well, it didn't take long for you to point that out. Thought you liked it when, I thought you liked it when I was on mute. I, I, I think there is a chance, and with a caveat. The, the reason there's a chance is because money keeps coming in over projections. I don't think it'll hurt, I don't mean to offend anybody by saying this, but again, I don't think it'll hurt that we're going into an election year with districts moving around. And I think, and we did have this conversation with some of your staff yesterday, supervisor. There might be some, a little more strategy, I mean, that we recommended yesterday in terms of, you know, this might be a thing where the North Coast comes together and, and is saying the same thing to your legislators. This is what we want, if there's more one-time money. The caveat that I, I just have to put out there is God forbid, you know, into the fall, we have, you know, even more fires than we've already had this year. Keeping wildfires at the forefront, the legislature and the governor's minds. Drought isn't, you know, unless we have some kind of miracle September, miracle October. I think that, that's going to linger as well as things that the legislature and the governor may want to put one-time money on. But I think, I think roads and bridges is, is in the mix there somewhere.
Can I also add in, Supervisor Bone, a county to your south, just a little bit north of Sacramento here, essentially securitized like 10 years worth of SB1 money? Because they wanted to pave, they were able to pave, I don't know.
The whole, the whole county?
Basically, yeah, basically the whole county. Because right now, you know, and they did this a couple of years ago, but the, the time value of money, they figured they could get more roads paved with, you know, with, using the power of the dollar they had at the time versus waiting until that 10th year where it wouldn't buy as much. And they were actually able to, to do that. We worked through Caltrans and I think the Transportation Agency to make sure there were no questions there about them doing that. But it did work and created some, you know, immediate resources to do the paving and road repair that needed to happen that had been neglected. And that's, I'm happy to connect your staff with that county's team if that's something you want to further explore.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have a question.
Okay.
I'm not expecting any raise. You mentioned the vouchers, the Section 8 vouchers. And I know in our community, it wasn't until a couple of years ago that we were able to use those after changing the rules at our local housing authority, to have them be project-based. And that's what we were needing to get projects over the line, both with the, I believe, the Vet Center and Samoa. So I'm curious with these Section 8 vouchers, do you have any idea, you know, if, if it's up to the communities ourselves to figure out what is the best mix? Or are they strictly person-based or project-based, or is there any information yet?
I don't know. I think we're going to have to ask around for that. I think it's a great question. We know just the right people to ask. Part of it, supervisor, is, you know, the flexibility on them may change depending on the spending level in the federal bill. And so, you know, we know just the right people to ask, so we'll do that, and we'll get back to Sean and Alicia with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions before we go to public comment, in which no one has their hand up in public comment? As we wore everybody out earlier today. Okay. Yes, Rex.
And Paul, you brought it up about the forest fires. I don't know if it, if the extra bodies and, and what we're doing of making defensible space and everything else. But I think we've far exceeded already this year, knowing full well it's not done. But we've far exceeded acreage than we have last year. But last year was close to 11,000 structures burned, and we're only, you know, not all houses, but I mean, just structures, anything, barns, sheds, and everything else. It was close to 11,000. We're only a little over 3,000. And as far as deaths go, I know they can run because the way the fires run, but we're, we're, I think we've had three deaths this year, and last year we had 33. And I'm just wondering if some of these things we're doing, and, and right now, a lot of public lands are burning up compared to private lands and things like that. So are we seeing a gain is, is the, are they patting themselves on the back saying, well, we're, we're doing a pretty good job? I mean, I think six of the seven biggest fires were started, were, and they don't know the cause, but were started by lightning. So are we, are we doing a better job with, nobody's dragging their chains or they're wrapping them, you know, or, or things like that, or is that up in any of the discussions?
Yeah, it is. I think we're doing a better job, first and foremost. I think, you know, the, the U.S. Forest Service, I think, is finally, I almost say it's, it's a dogpile on the U.S. Forest Service. But I think, you know, the Newsom, I, I think everybody is in on, hey, U.S. Forest Service, you've got to do things. And they've even admitted that they should be doing things at least slightly different. That, that's, that's kind of a big deal. We're still waiting for all the examinations into all the causes of the fire, but I'm glad you brought up the dragon chain, even though it started a horrible fire. You know, this year, as we got towards the end of summer, camping restrictions were imposed. I frankly think we're going to see a little bit more of that, depending on how things go going forward. I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna see some other stuff proposed to limit. We can't stop lightning strikes. So I do think that the governor and the legislature are going to try to propose limiting human activity that starts these fires. And, you know, I'm trying not to, I'm not leaving out the utilities. One of them may or may not have been responsible for the Dixie Fire, I think we all know. And so I, you know, it's a mix, Rex. To me, it's a mix. And I think really where the administration and legislature are, I'll say it again, is you can't stop lightning strikes, so you got to try to stop everything else that you, you maybe can.
I think we should also just jump in with, and Rex, you know this from your involvement with RCRC, how heavily they are engaged on the Board of Forestry regulations that are the result of legislation that told them to go rewrite how California manages developments in areas that are in the WUI, the Wildland Urban Interface. There was a bill, SB12, by Senator McGuire that is, was the third effort on the bill to further define what is an adequate set of conditions in order to put housing, to build new houses. And the measure was killed in Assembly Housing. Their Building Industries Association really had a fit over some of the things that were in there. But between the legislation that we will continue to see, trying to steer development out of the WUI, and then the immense amount of work that's happening at the regulatory level, there's, those kinds of things are, when those are fully realized, will also help, I think, combat the loss of life. You know, certainly in the campfire, people died trying to leave, but it was because they didn't have adequate roads to get out of town. And that is something that's in these bills, like how, how wide are the roads, can the fire trucks turn around? Do you have a secondary way to get out if the first way is blocked by fire or firefighting equipment? Those are things that are not fully implemented clearly. And, and we still have had far less loss of life this year. But you're going to see when those are fully in place, hopefully, you know, not, I don't know that they could ever fully eliminate the loss of structures, but there are major efforts that in some cases are very upsetting to local governments because it takes away your just, your discretion over what you can permit. It's going to make things more expensive. And there is this unfortunate also side effect where people can use the fire standards as basically a NIMBY-type, you know, veto of, of a project going in down the street if they don't want to give up a right of way to expand the street or something. So there's these kinds of things that are going to continue to crop up as the state gets better at trying to manage climate change. And I think with the president's visit yesterday, I'm sure you all have seen your own news feeds and social media feeds. There's definitely a renewed interest at the federal level on doing more to combat climate change as well, after seeing, you know, one of our national jewels almost burned to the ground. I think that there's renewed effort that way as well.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I want to add, I'm glad, that's a, if I could, Madam Chair, I just, I'm glad Karen went to National Jewel. Far as I know, I mean, besides Herculean effort of firefighters and a little bit of luck with the weather, what really happened to save South Lake Tahoe is there is a ginormous break that was already there. Basically, as I understand, a combination of a, a East-West rail line and one of the big trunk lines for the power grid. And, you know, CalFire knew that they had that going for them. And I don't know how closely folks were tracking this, but they started hurting the fire, literally, by using that brake. And it's something Karen and I have been trying to tell the state for a really long time is, and others have too, obviously, we need bigger brakes. And that's going to be tough. It's going to be tough to look at, drive by. But at the end of the day, we're going to save a lot of lives and property. And we got to be smarter about this stuff. So I think, back to your question, Rex, I, I think the legislature, I think more members of the legislature, it's just a fact, that's how South Lake Tahoe was saved. And so I just think they're going to take that into account, and we'll see where they go next. Thank you.
And Supervisor Bushnell, your hand was up. Do you have any questions?
I'm good, thank you. It's very interesting to me, as being a new person, thank you to both of you. It's been a learning process.
Thank you.
Any, Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, I want to thank our team in Sacramento for these updates. I do appreciate it. I apologize, I had a conflict yesterday. We'll get together and, and go through some of these things. I do want to, you know, one of the items that our board supported, and may seem small, and it is, was the, was the support for the bill that criminalized the, the removal of Dudley on our coastline. And I think that that's passed, and I'm happy that that's going through. And, and also, as you know, there's SB 69 through McGuire's office for the Great River Trail. And that seems to be doing well as well. And also, I, I have heard that, that Senate Bill 307 may be amended to ask that, to block the potential for coal export out of Humboldt Bay. And so this is an issue that's just popped up, and I want to, I'm hoping that, I mean, I'm hoping that our board will support that at some point in the near future. I know that other counties are definitely looking to, to support that effort as well. And so thanks for keeping an eye on all these things.
Yeah, I, I mentioned that to you guys, and I suppose you might have heard some others as well.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I hope Madam Chair, it's okay if I, I say that bill has been amended for that purpose in those, the languages in print currently. That happened in the last two days of the legislative year. I think it was amended last Thursday. And we sent, you know, staff has that.
All right. Well, now I'll officially go to the public for comment, because we do have a hand up. So if you are 3053, press star six to unmute, and you will have three minutes.
Hello, Thomas Holder, can you hear me correctly?
Yes, Thomas.
Hi, so the only, I just looked over your agenda items, and then I heard some state legislation possibilities that may be against rural living, but maybe I missed that because I am studying defensible space right now as we speak, so. And then another thing I heard was the bill about the railroad trail, and then possibly another bill about the coal thing. I personally don't have an opinion one way or the other, but I think before the county jumps on board about the idea of shutting down the possibility of a railroad being open, they look at all the economic possibility and environmental risk to reward if that railroad was ever to be open, as far as carbon footprint of other things being imported and exported from the county. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
All right, thank you, Thomas. So no other hands are up for public comment. Go back to the board. Any last thoughts we want to share with Paul and Karen? And then hoping to see you in person soon.
Yeah, likewise.
All right, yeah, I miss the thunder and lightning show. Which one of you is, which one was US Thunder? I can't remember.
Oh, good.
Yoder.
Yeah. You just have to, you just have to remember who's lightning, basically, and then.
All right. Well, thanks for being with us today and spending time with us yesterday. And we will let you go back around about your day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Well.
See you guys. All right. So I think we are now down to a couple of closed session items. And I'd like to ask County Council, County Council Billingsley to brief us on those items.
Thank you, Chair. It's the intention of the board to meet in closed session on two items pursuant to Government Code 54957, to consider both the public employee performance evaluation and also appointment for the position of county administrative officer.
All right. So we'll go out to public comment, of which there is none. And how long would you suspect this will potentially take?
This one could take right up until the 3 o'clock time set, which is also a closed session. So I don't know, Jefferson, if you would like to read that one in so that we have that flexibility to go there at 3?
I don't believe I can, because there may be public comment on it. But I, I imagine we'll just come back at 3 to do that.
Okay.
All right. So there's no public comment on the session we're heading into now. So we'll see you in closed session. So County Council Billingsley, do we have a report out of closed session?
Yes, thank you, Chair. On items L5, M1, and M2, there's no reportable action.
Thank you. See you all next week.
Aren't we closing in memory? Oh, shoot, everybody just.
All right, I'm, I'm here.
I'm in here. We're still got.
There's nothing to do. Okay, Dave Mogney, or?
There's two, and let's get Rex on, I think.
Okay, we did Sally Tanner last week. We adjourned her in memory, and I thought we did the other gentleman.
No, 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 it's for today.
Well, I'll let you say, I do not, I know.
No, it's Rex. Let me get Rex on. It's Rex. Can you, Virginia, want to yell at him to, because?
That's an open question. Do I want to yell at him?
We do it next week.
I think that we should ask him. It's his person in his district.
I'm going to jump in here.
Nikki's trying to grab him right now.
Sorry.
All right, I'll let you get in there, and you can, Karen, get closer to it.
You're crossing out. There you go.
Yeah, we, we're closing in honor, in honor of Dave Mogney, the owner of the Palace and of the Ivanhoe. Dave is, Dave is probably most known for his athletic abilities. He's one of the top 50 athletes of the century. He was all everything as a Ferndale Wildcat. Him and his wife Barb met down, lived down in Berkeley. He came back here, bought the Ivanhoe, and was with his dad, Lino. Started cooking up some great Italian dishes, and it made me one of the top restaurants. And just a, just a good guy. We've all got friends that have worked for him. And he was just, they were called mom and dad by their hell. Mom's dad, mom's mad, dad's mad type of thing. But he was a, he was a great advocate for Ferndale, a great advocate for the, he was former board member of the Humboldt County Fair and president of the Humboldt County Fair. But he was just one of those good guys that left here, did well, played football for Cal Berkeley, then played rugby, and he is, a lot of grown men cried last week when he died because he was that good a guy. He was that guy.
Yeah.
And it's a, it's a, it's a big hole left in Ferndale, and it's a big hole left in a lot of people's hearts. He was just, I know Michelle's husband. He was just, I know Michelle's husband played basketball with them. I think he graduated in 75, but I mean, he was.
My husband said he was the hardest guy to defend, just an amazing athlete, amazing athlete.
He got inducted into the CR Hall of Fame because he went there for a year. So to Barb and the citizens of Ferndale, I mean, basically the county, that place had quite a following. So there was, you'd run into people from McKinley going there having dinner when you go in there. That was just, it was that good and the ambiance was perfect. So sad day for a lot of people, but I wanted to close it on Dave Mogney.
All right. Well, in those great words, we will be adjourned. Next.